Hello. Good evening. My name is Allegra Gosarin and I am the Dance Director at Sherwood Middle School. We are delighted today to introduce part of our dance ensemble from Smells. Get up. Introduce yourselves.
Hi. Oh, sorry. My name is Joanna Fang.
You can go to your spot.
Hi, my name is London Richardson.
Hi, my name is Peyton Ashley.
Hello, my name is Brennan South.
And these are eighth graders, part of our C-level group. And they're excited for middle school, I mean, high school next year. Right now, they're in middle school. Thanks.
Please have a seat. We're going to get started. I'd like to call to order this special meeting for Thursday, April 7th, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. We will begin with an invocation by school board member Connie Bernard, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Bow your heads, please. Blessed Jesus, please invoke over us a spirit of unity and cooperation as we deliberate over these important matters that affect our children and our district and our city. Help us to be cooperative and unified. Thank you. In His name. Amen.
And please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District nine, President Chapman.
Present.
District four, Vice President Collins. District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis. District three, Mr. Howard. District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Here.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
Yeah, it sounded like it came from Owen Holiday when Trammell answered. All right, we have a quorum. So now we move to item B1, Discussion in Consideration of the Selection of a Map for Publication in Compliance with Louisiana Revised Statute 1758.2. I am following the script that Mr. Shamblin has put together for me that reflects what Ms. Collins instructed in her memo of the board meeting that was passed. And so I now open the floor for nominations regarding map selections. Nominations do not require a second. In nominating a map, please identify the map by its label as provided on the map list. A member may nominate more than one map. Before we do that, is everyone logged into the board docs? All right. So let's see. The floor is open for nominations. Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before nominations, I would like to make a motion that we would allow a presentation around redistricting. This is a request that I made a couple of weeks ago, but was denied in there. So therefore, there must be a vote of the board. So I would move that we allow a presentation around redistricting from Data Center.
I'm going to defer to you because is that an additional agenda item? Or you need to let me know because procedurally, we proceed differently.
Yes, Sir. President Chapman, this is a special meeting of the board as per policy. This is an item not on the agenda, so it does require per policy. And Ms. Ware Jackson, I've spoken about this, a unanimous vote of members present at the meeting. So the motion will require a second and the vote.
Okay. So Ms. Ware Jackson would like a presentation by the Data Center. Is there a second? Mr. Howard. Let's see. So Mr. Blue, you're up, but I guess you're not on this. So I'll just, you're just going to have to come back, man. Okay. So any comments from the audience on the motion to add an agenda item?
Do we even do that before we vote?
We do, yeah. I think so, yeah. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, any comments from the audience about adding an agenda item? You will come to the mic. Let me be clear here because some people don't understand this. We take comments from the board, not questions. And your three minutes, the clock is right there where the little lights are. It'll give you a warning when there's one minute left. So anybody that would like to make a public comment, please come to the mic. We need the mic. Is it?
Presenter mic is not on, guys.
Anyway.
There you go. It's on.
My name is James Finney. My comment is simply that it never hurts to have more information, and so I would hope that you would go ahead and amend the agenda as it has been requested. Thank you.
Fairleigh Jackson, District five. I support my school board member's recommendation that she be allowed to do a special presentation. I think she's actually made this request formally, and it was not honored. So I ask you all, as members of the board, to give your fellow board member the respect to allow her to have whatever questions she wants to have answered and respect her wishes in this agenda amendment. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Cedric Floyd, President of Data Center. I want to make sure that each one of you got a copy of this presentation.
This is about the agenda?
Yes, yes. I know exactly what. I've been on the school board longer than you. What I'm saying is...
You've been on the school board longer than me?
No, a school board.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I have never been on this school board. So I'll get my time back, which you just took.
I know.
What I'm saying is, this presentation is about redistricting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. It was in the dark after Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act that you passed a plan that was dilutive of black voter strength by taking District five, that was a solid black majority district, it was 70%, and reduced it down to a non-black majority district, and especially on Election Day, the last three elections since the plan. I'm asking the board members, when it's your time to speak, please call on me to further explain the report. That's an order. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Mary Juno. Ms. Ware Jackson is my school board representative, and I'm asking you to honor her request, to work with your colleague who's worked so hard to collaborate with others.
Seeing no other comments from the audience, is this, we're doing this on the machines, Mr. Shamblin? Ms. Bernard?
I just have a point of order. Does this, how many votes does it require?
I think in this one, if any person votes against it, it cannot be placed on the item, on the agenda.
I thought it requires a unanimous vote. That was my understanding. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you. I understand that this takes a unanimous vote, and I would hope that our board members would be interested in this information because there has been so much concern in the community around our processes and in this redistricting process and in the former. And this is new information to me. I saw this information last week before we were scheduled to do the special meeting. And in light of that, I urge... And in light of that, I urge you to see this information, to hear the information, and before you decide on which maps you're going to nominate and eventually which map we will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President Collins.
I just want to say I support my colleagues' remarks. The information contained in the presentation would help explain some things that myself and other colleagues were trying to raise, but we're not experts in redistricting. And so perhaps maybe we didn't articulate it clearly, and it would give everybody an opportunity to simply hear viewpoints and analysis that we have not been privy to prior to this point. And so that's why I support my colleagues' motion.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, President Chapman. I too wanted to say that I support my colleagues' motion at getting this information. If we've been paying attention to what's happening at the state legislature, obviously, like, these maps are like a real thing, and it's a real backlash behind how we do maps. We had a veto override session here in the legislature, and now the state of Louisiana is being sued by multiple entities to ensure that they get these maps right. And so the more information, the better. I would hate for us to just obviously subject ourselves to additional lawsuits. So if we have more information to make an informed decision, it's obvious that people are where they are, but the more information we have to make this decision, the better. So thank you. And I want to just say that I support my colleagues' motion.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. The board is clear. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. Motion fails.
We are now back on nominations. I nominate, any... We don't vote in secret, sir. Mr. Blue?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Plan 22.
Any other nominations? Mr. Howard?
I would like to nominate the Ware Collins Plan 11.
Is that the very first one on the column?
It's like the...
Fifth from the right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Should have seen that. Any other nominations on maps? Hearing no other nominations, I now open the floor for public comment on each map. As you approach the mic, please state your name, identify the map by label that you will be commenting on. Each person will be allotted three minutes to comment on each map. When you finish commenting on a map, please identify the next map you would like to comment on by label and begin your comments. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Fred Smith. I come tonight to ask that you endorse the redistricting map proposed by board members Evelyn Ware Jackson and Don Collins, the Ware Collins map to the back. Their proposal would expand the school board from the current number of nine to 11 members, which would result in districts of just under 35,200, as opposed to the current number of just over 43,000. It's believed by many that smaller districts will result in better representation of all people, and important to me, a majority number of districts likely to be represented by African-Americans. According to the 2020 census, over the last decade, white population in the East Baton Rouge Parish school district area has decreased by 17,000, while black population has increased by 5,000. Once we include the overall growth of the district areas, there are 25,744 more blacks than whites. Percentage-wise, the proportion of black to white is 47.5% black to 40.9% white. And though there has been considerable intentionality put forth by Mr. Mike Hefner and geographic planning to shore up the white population, counting mixed-race people that do not claim any part of being African-American as white, even with that kind of population massaging, African-Americans are still the majority within the district area. Of the proposals that the board is considering, the Jackson-Ware-Collins Plan fares best when measured against the 10-point criteria the board had announced it would use. Based on that alone, I would hope that the decision tonight would be to endorse that plan. 80% of the students attending East Baton Rouge Parish Public Schools are African-American. The district area is majority African-American. Thus, I'm asking you to comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 in the redistricting of our school board by ensuring that at least half of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board districts are majority-black districts. Specifically, I ask you to endorse the Jackson-Ware-Collins Plan and expand the number of seats from nine back to 11. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that, could you pass this out? So on the record that every board member got a copy of the report. Back in 2014, in the dark, after Section 5 was knocked out with Shelby Colley, this board, one month before qualifying, reduced its number to nine. With that, in a DOJ-approved plan of 11-member districts, District five was 70% black. On Election Day in 2010, a similar district, you had almost 3,000 more black voters than white voters in 2010 in District five. What happened is, you changed to District five by taking out 2,228 blacks and adding 11,143 whites, brought the district from 70.56% black to 49.54%, which is not a black majority. Taking into consideration voting age population, and then taking into consideration Election Day voting in that district that I laid out, this is not a black-majority district. So when it comes down to your nine-member plan, you have six white-majority districts and three black. Now, since the 2020 census has been released, you have black to white, about 54% black, 46%... Your Plan 22 dilutes black voter strength on its face. For one thing, it dilutes it from the benchmark plan that the Justice Department approved in 2012. So you have, I want to make sure this on the record, in terms of what, because it's going to have to go to court. But anyway, thank you very much, and I look forward to board members calling me during the presentation so I could further elaborate on this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. So yet again tonight, there was a vote against racial lines, party lines, that didn't need to be. And I have the feeling we're moving toward another one of those in a few minutes. So let me try something different, and I'll get back to numbers in a moment. But let's pretend, for the sake of discussion, that Plan 22 is legal, just for the sake of discussion. Let's pretend. And that it would survive what is almost certainly an inevitable court challenge, maybe even in two different venues. So pretend that it prevails. What kind of a message are you sending to the students of this district? That all the white votes are working against historical trends, preserving the status quo? All the black members of the board would like to move forward and actually undo some damage that was done in 2014? Instead of doing the bare minimum of what you think you can possibly get away with if you get lucky with the judge, why not actually do the right thing? Let's make a habit of doing the right thing. It would be a wonderful change that I look forward to. Because even though I've expected and predicted for months that this will be yet another, all the whites on one side, all the blacks, and the community on the other side, I'd like to hold out hope that one of you will flip over from the dark side and vote the way you should because it's best for the community. So let me put my mathematician hat on again and give you some numbers. The Ware Collins Plan has a total deviation on either side of ideal of 5.66% without splitting any districts. Plan 22, which should have had smaller deviations by percentage because the building blocks are smaller relative to that size district, split six districts, and it's still off by 9.32%. It's not necessary to be that far off. If you wanted a nine-member plan, you had ample opportunity for months to propose a good nine-member plan. And instead, you left us to the last minute to decide which of these 12 or so bad nine-member plans you were all ready to vote for. The community deserves better. You could do better. You should do better. I would hope that sometime soon, you as a board, start to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fairleigh Jackson, District five. I think I'm a little confused. So based on the memo that you all passed as far as the process for this evening, members of the audience will each be allowed up to three minutes to make comments on each of the plans nominated for adoption separately. So I will consider this my commentary on Map 22. So I'm not quite sure how this process was being followed, if we're commenting on 22, or how you're keeping track of...
You have properly identified the map that you wish to comment on, and you are correct that you can comment on each map for three minutes.
Great. So basically, the audience gets to comment twice. Okay. So as far as Map 22 goes, really, all I have to say about this is, in the many independent analysis that you have all received, this is a map among all the other nine-member maps that really doesn't pass muster. It's been identified or not identified as something legal by the Legal Defense Fund, the National Legal Defense Fund. Mr. Finney made all the points with great accuracy that I would just reiterate and hope that you consider. I sent you all an email today with a link to all of the public documents that have been uploaded to the site that you all allowed us to do that with hopes that you have reviewed all of those. So I really hope you took a moment to do that. There's a lot of very important information there, independent analysis, that could hopefully save your taxpayers some money. And that includes everybody in this room. So thank you.
Hello, I'm William Matthews from the School of Bel Air. And I wanted to let y'all know that I'm Puerto Rican, black and white, and I need a map that could benefit me and let me be who I really am. So I was going to vote for Collins' map. And that we didn't fight hard for all these years just to be called something or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Storm Matthews, it's been a long time since I stood before you. I had a stroke on Monday. My words might not be as clear as they normally are. Got out of the hospital yesterday, and here I am. Tried to write it all out, and it's not all the way there. Well, my son was trying to say, and I'm going to make clear, you all have seen me as teacher advocate, union worker, child advocate, which you have not seen stand before you, as daughter of a Black Panther, somebody who Angela Davis holds dear, somebody who has worked with Pam Africa and worked on getting Mumie Abu Jamal out of jail. Now, I am black, Puerto Rican, and white. And I don't know if Hefner's in the building, but I guarantee you, since we talking about my Hispanic side, he does not have the kahunas to come tell me to my face I am not black. So with that being said, the only map that is up that counts me, since black and white is black, but black, white, and Hispanic put you in the white table, which is what my son was trying to say, since the only map that is on the table that counts us as black, which is what the DOJ says, is the Evelyn Ware Jackson and the Collins map. That is the only one that should count because that is what the Supreme Court has ruled. And in fact, the Supreme Court did rule in cases and set precedence that you cannot, just because you are Hispanic and black, be deemed not black. I guarantee you, if there's anybody in this school system that will take it to the Supreme Court, you have found her. So if anybody wants to pick a map that counts me as white and my children as white and not black, please vote for a map other than the map that counts us as black. And I will take you all the way back to the Supreme Court where there is already a precedent set. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Carwell. I'm in District 11. I'm going to speak one time because I've got one group of information to say. I'm surprised, out of all those maps that you settled on two, I'm surprised that the nine-member map that you chose is one that doesn't fit the bill when it comes to the Voting Rights Act. We have more African-American people in our district than we have white people in our district, and your map does not support that. And as white people, we need to stop being afraid to let our power go when the numbers don't support that. I don't know how else to say it. There's a grasping here that I don't appreciate. I don't appreciate us putting ourselves in a situation where we're going to have to spend money and time on a lawsuit. We don't have time for that. We need to be educating our children instead of fighting over the appropriateness of racial makeup of a map when it's numbers. This isn't a mystery. This is numbers, and the numbers are clear. My second thing is, we have two board members, Board Member Collins and Ware Jackson, who did their homework. They spent their time working to come up with a map that fulfilled the legality and fulfilled, you know, everything that the map was supposed to. And I hope that y'all support your members, your colleagues, who put the time in to do the work to make a map. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. I came straight from work, Anshel Bradford, and didn't have change. I had a great dress and outfit planned for this, but oh, well, you get the lab outfit. All right, Anshel Bradford. I'm in Jill Dyson's, school board member, I'm in legislature mode, Dyson's district. So first things first, I'm concerned with choosing any of the nine single-member maps because they don't appear to meet the Voting Rights Act, Section 2. And so that's a big disappointment. But also, in terms of just representation, I want to... There's been so much conversation over the last couple of months. We often get into like the minutia of what we feel is too big or too small of a school board. But this is really not about that. And I think it's really important that as we move forward with these two maps, or as y'all vote on these two maps, or wherever we are in this process, that we recognize that our decisions should be and are expected to be by me and the public to be... that our decisions should be and are expected to be by me and the public to be substantiated by data and by the law. And so this should not be about op-eds or conversations or whatever about what's too big or too small or unwieldy, as some people like to say. Over the past decade, our population, both in diversity and in size, has shifted, and it's our responsibility and y'all's responsibility to fully represent that. It's just an added bonus that as you have a larger school board, you also create greater access for those of us who have to meet with y'all and try and meet with y'all. But at the end of the day, this is about honoring the Voting Rights Act. It's about honoring the folks that exist in this parish over the last decade and then the trends over the next eight years when we have this conversation. And that's a long time to have a map that doesn't represent us. Beyond that, I will just say that I'm in full support of the Ware Jackson-Collins, I probably said that in the wrong order, map. And at minimum, that is the one that meets the different criteria we've talked about for the past couple of weeks and also is the most representative. Beyond that, if, so 11 is the minimum one that meets the legal requirements and also is representative, but in actuality, it's your larger maps that are the most representative. So the least we could do is vote yes for 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford.
Hello. Good evening. Jennifer Harding, District 5. I'm a parent of a public school student. I'm a product of public schools. And today, I'm speaking as the president, the board president of the Progressive Social Network. Since, and I'm going to reserve my extra three minutes for later to come up a second time if necessary. Since the beginning of this process that we set out on, Progressive Social Network has joined with other local organizations like Power Coalition, Louisiana Progress, Step Up, and then also some national redistricting experts at the NAACP Legal Defense Fund and the Southern Poverty Law Center. We were glad to get their assistance so that we could help the citizens and stakeholders really understand the complexities of this process. Together, all of these organizations represent a very diverse group of individuals who are very highly engaged, care deeply about our schools, and understand that the decisions that you're making today are going to impact our district for the next decade. We are your constituents. Regardless of today's outcome, we will definitely still be engaged, continue to be engaged, especially voting in the upcoming fall elections. And we stand here today in support of the Ware Collins 11-member plan. So in a good compromise, people from both sides of the negotiating table each get a little bit of what they want. The Ware Collins 11 Plan is a good compromise. Throughout this process, members of the public have been very consistent in what we have been asking for, to expand the number of single-member districts. Many have even pushed for the maximum allowed, a 15-member plan. A handful of others prefer to stick with the current nine-member framework, the status quo, under the justification that that's more efficient. Early on, we provided all the board members with an analysis from redistricting experts at the Legal Defense Fund, illustrating that it is very possible to meet the legal requirements of the Voting Rights Act in a nine-member plan. The Ware Collins 11 Plan is a good compromise. It incorporates both the fundamental principles of racial proportionality required by the Voting Rights Act. It also incorporates the public's desire for more single-member districts in a reasonable way. We're not asking for it all. We're just asking to meet us in the middle. But let's revisit the concept of a nine-member plan. And it's already been said, I think we agree here that fairness and equity are more important values than efficiency. Efficiency is nice, but not at the expense of creating a framework that diminishes equitable access to black voters in East Baton Rouge Parish. I'll take my next three minutes. Thank you. Not in a district that serves a student body that is over 80% black. Not in a district that has a demographic landscape that demands better racial proportionality than what we currently have. In order for a nine-member plan to be racially proportional, the demographics of our district, the true demographics of our districts dictate that it must include five majority-black districts in order to comply with the VRA. That's irrefutable. And we know that's possible. Because at the very beginning of this process, the Legal Defense Fund provided you all with an example map, a nine-member plan that included five majority-black districts. However, no, none of the nine-member plans that are up today, that were up today, including the number 22, meets that criteria. Voting for the Plan 22 isn't efficient. It is a vote for a protracted, costly legal battle that ultimately stakeholders and tax holders will be left holding the bill to pay for. It's irresponsible, to say the least. The voters in this district, we have done our part. We have participated in the process. We have learned all we can learn to know how to help you in this process and help you understand what we want. We want a plan that gives us better representation through true racial proportionality and more single-member districts. We have said it over and over again, and we believe that the Ware Collins 11 Plan does achieve this. So the choice is now in your hands. You have a choice to make. It's in your hands, and this choice is yours and yours alone. This choice will be your legacy for the next 10 years. And it will be your legacy this fall, when some of you come knocking on doors in whatever size districts you end up deciding to have and asking for your vote. You can choose to pick a legal battle that's not efficient, that's not good for anybody. Or you can choose a good compromise that everyone can walk away feeling good about. We're asking you to choose fairness. We're asking you to choose the Ware Collins 11-member plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Katrina Robertson, and I'm a member of the 4th District under Don Collins. I'm here today as a concerned mother to two sons currently in East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, a product of East Baton Rouge Schools, and a community advocate. I believe that increasing the board from nine to 11 will allow each board member to connect with their district better. More members can advocate for more monies to be funneled into the school areas that need it. The wealthy areas are most likely to get the financial help from PTO and booster clubs. I've experienced this firsthand with my child switching schools in the middle of the school year from Greenbrier Elementary to Parkview Elementary. We need more board members that are better connected to the districts, and smaller districts ensure that. We need people on the ground in the districts to give the schools and the children a fair chance at a quality education. With the population increase, the map should be revamped to accommodate that growth. Adding more board members can stabilize a shaky system that's already failing, and again, give the community a few more eyes and ears to address their concerns. Just remember, the most important responsibility of the school board member is to work with the communities, not against us, to help improve the students' achievements with the district. So I stand in solidarity with the 11 board member with the Ware Collins Map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm speaking in support of the Ware Collins 11 Map. Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, board members. My name is Anne Marie Blank, and I live in District 7. I'm a parent of four kids in EBR schools, and I'm an advocate for our traditional public school system. I volunteer with the Progressive Social Network's Education Group, and I'm here today to advocate for racially proportional representation in our district and to ask you to increase the number of board members. The Ware Collins Map is the best option to achieve both of these things. Our district does not have a good record when it comes to racial fairness. Until 2007, our EBR school system was on the wrong side of one of the longest-running legal battles surrounding desegregation, as other people before me have mentioned. We don't need another drawn-out, costly legal battle. I'm asking you to choose the map that gives us racial proportionality and better representation. That's the 11-member Ware Collins Plan. For those of you trying to justify this nine-member map by saying that the board will somehow run more smoothly, our own demographer has said that the size of the board does not correlate to how well the board works together. You as individuals have to choose to work together so that you're, whether you're nine or 11 or 15, the size doesn't matter when it comes to working together. Your willingness to work together is what matters. What is affected by the size is the ability to achieve racial proportionality and the ability to better connect with your constituents. And I'm not talking about just forwarding us to the correct employee that can hear our problem. I'm talking about actually connecting with us and determining if the system can benefit from tweaks and changes. Mr. Goday, when I've had questions and issues with our schools, you've been very quick to pass me off to a district employee who cannot help me with the root of the problem. And absolutely nothing against the staff, because they only work with what you can give them, but they quote handbook policy and tell me they'll get back to me. But you are the person that should be connecting with me to see what issues our children are experiencing in the schools. I'm hopeful that with fewer constituents, you'll be able to connect more meaningfully with the people that you represent. Additionally, and more importantly, I challenge any of you who are leaning towards the nine-member map because you think it will run more smoothly to consider the moral implications of choosing convenience over racial fairness. You might think it's more convenient to organize your month-to-month votes with fewer board members, but knowing you will be disenfranchising, black and brown voters should give you pause. Please don't set us back 70 years. Show the public that we can achieve racial fairness without litigation. Please choose the Ware Collins 11 Map.
Hello. I'm Mary Juno. I'm a mother of three children who have gone through the East Baton Rouge Parish Public School System by our choice, and we've loved it. And it's been a wonderful environment for our children to, among other things, learn to understand and respect people from other cultures, faith or lack of faith traditions, other values, and to learn how to be respectful, supportive, collaborative. As I've already written to you multiple times, I support the Ware Collins 11-member district map. I believe Mr. Howard also contributed, as did Dr. Finney. Everyone else who's spoken has made comments for which I fully agree, and they certainly can speak more eloquently than I. So I'm just going to add that what you do today in this vote is very symbolic for our community, for our children, as Dr. Finney pointed out, because we want them to learn to get along with people who aren't like them, right? I'm asking you, white school board members who just voted against getting more information, I'm asking you to support your black colleagues who collaborated and came up with a map that's not going to lead us into a court battle, that's not going to have us go home to our children and be asked, "Mom, why don't they want a majority-black school district?" Because I have an acquisitive child who asks those questions. And I don't have a good answer. I feel like I'm in the 20th century here, not the 21st. We need to honor the numbers as well. As Dr. Finney pointed out, some of this is just mathematical. So if you're going against what the census says, if you can't just break it up like a tannogram, like a puzzle, then there's got to be some other hidden motive. And what else are we supposed to think in the South, really? Please vote for your colleagues' collaborative map, one that the community, black, white, and Hispanic, have been asking you to vote for. Because you serve us, not your clubs and not other interests, but us, because we've put our children in your care.
Hello, everybody. My name is Quentin Anthony Anderson. I am a longtime resident of East Baton Rouge Parish and a proud product of East Baton Rouge Parish Public Schools and alumni of McKinley Senior High School. Go Blue. I am here in support of the Ware Collins 11 Map. To be honest with you, I'm in support of anything that increases the size of these maps because that's what democracy looks like. And I think that trying to assert that efficiency over democracy is somehow a virtue is just not something that registers with me. Our democracy is admittedly messy, but that's part of the deal. You're not going to get things that happen very quickly, but you're going to get things that happen collaboratively. You're going to get things that happen with the voices of your constituents. And quite frankly, based on the performance of our public schools in recent years, I would think that you all would want to be more in touch with your districts, not less. I would think that you all would want more help on the board, more voices, more perspectives. And that leads me to my other point, and this is one where I'm a little cynical. I work with political candidates a lot. And I don't work with the ones that usually have the campaign bank accounts that you all have. And so I do want these sort of boards to be accessible to grassroots candidates, to parents. This is local politics. This is not Congress, which I'm not going to endorse the barrier to entry there being higher, but this is literally your local school board. There are parents out here that should have every right and every opportunity to be able to run for a seat if they feel like their school board member isn't being responsive enough, if they feel like they're not seeing the progress that they need to see in their district. And it should not be hard to be able to win one of these seats if you're willing to do the work, knock on the doors, make the phone calls, talk to the voters, and then once you get elected, do the same stuff for the next four years and hope that you've done a good enough job to get reelected. This should not be something where we're raising the barrier to entry to one of the most fundamental local government bodies. I'm going to continue for a little bit. Again, this is what democracy looks like. Don't be afraid of grassroots competition, and most certainly, don't be afraid of your constituents having even greater access to you. Almost every candidate that I've ever worked with, especially people who have ever been mayors of small towns or who have ever been council people, they will say that the greatest joy in their political career, especially if they went up into the more miserable places like Washington, DC, they will say that the greatest joy in their political career was when, you know, somebody like, you know, Ms. Jackson calls and says that there was an issue on her block or there was an issue in her school, and that board member or that mayor or that council person literally checked in with her at 3:00 PM, checked in with her at 5:00 PM, and when it wasn't settled, went to her house at 7:00 PM to try to address the issue personally. That's what local government is. That's what local politics is. And when you start to raise the barrier to entry into elite boards like this, you start to make it a self-fulfilling prophecy. This is not an elite board. It's a people's board, and this should be accessible to all people. I endorse the 11-person board.
Hi, Colleen Kissel with Progressive Social Network of Baton Rouge, and here is myself as well. I'm going to just speak on this one. This is an emotional topic, right? I'm sure you've seen that with the people and all the calls that you've gotten over the last week.
If you could just clarify, which one is this one?
The, we're on the nine one.
Ware, the...
Are we on the nine one?
22. Whichever one you want.
The nine one, please.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. I was out with kids, so. It's your job to guide the district with facts, not just with all of our opinions that we throw at you. And here's a fact for you that you all know, is that you will get sued for this nine-member map. You will. Not by me, probably, but by plenty of other organizations who have told you you will get sued for this nine-member map because it doesn't meet the Voting Rights Act. And it's going to cost money, and it's going to cost time. So some on the board have said that this smaller map, where we keep the same number of districts, will make it easier to get a supermajority on issues that require a supermajority. But working with and compromising with the rest of these people on the board is your job. You're supposed to meet each other and talk to each other and get to know each other, even if you come in not knowing who each other are and come in with such opposing points of view that you don't think you'll ever get along. You have to get along at least a little bit to do your jobs. And you shouldn't be scared of increasing the number of districts. And you shouldn't be scared of increasing the number of districts above nine just because you don't want to talk and work to get that supermajority when you need it. You are all up for election, as I'm sure many people have stated, in November. Vote for a map that will not get us sued and waste us tons of money because we will remember when the election comes, if only because I'm yelling it in the streets, we will remember that you voted for a map that got us sued and wasted our money.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Moroso. I am a taxpayer, voter, and constituent in District 7. I am asking that you listen to the parents, the frontline stakeholders who have chosen public schools. The numbers are clear, based on the 2020 census, that there are more black people within the boundaries of our school system than white people. In case those numbers aren't enough, the population of kids in our district is vastly majority-black. It's not hard to do the right thing. It's not hard to listen to the frontline stakeholders like myself who have chosen to put our most treasured possessions, our children, in public schools. We are begging you to listen to us. We're asking you to support the Where Collins Plan. Quite frankly, you had the time to come up with a nine-member plan that passed muster. And from my point of view, one board, three board members actually did the work to collaborate with each other, to come up with a plan. Four, four board members worked together to come up with a plan that we can, that we're asking you to support. I can't help but think that those of you who don't want smaller districts don't really want to hear from us or reach out to as many constituents as possible. We will remember how you vote tonight, and we will bring that information with us to the ballot box this fall.
Too tall for this one. Okay, I'll bend over. Can I? Okay. Screwed up for everybody else. Hi, Peter Robins Brown, Louisiana Progress. We're based here in East Baton Rouge. One of the things we do at Louisiana Progress is we have a college fellowship program. Three of them are here with us today. And, you know, a part of the reason we do that is to educate young folks, to get them involved in the process and engaged with the hope that they stay in Louisiana, stay in East Baton Rouge Parish, and become leaders, active citizens in the community. When we stand here and we talk about a map that could potentially lead to lawsuits, I'm not going to guarantee that. Obviously, there's others who have spoken to that. It reminds me of the fact that in this state and in local governments, we have never really achieved racial proportionality without outside intervention. And when we talk to young folks and try to convince them to stay here and build a life and build a family and become longtime parts of the community, do all the things that I think all of us want to see in our community, that isn't lost on them. The fact that we never do it, just do the right thing without being forced to by a court or a federal action of some sort, that's not lost on them. And when they do get out of school and start to think about what their next steps in life will be, that's not lost on them. And I think we all want to see this community grow and thrive for the next generation and the generation after that. And I think that it would be a major, not just practical improvement to go with the Where Collins Plan, but it sends a signal that we don't need outside intervention to do the right thing. So I ask you to please support that plan, not just because it's the right thing to do, not just because it's the legal thing to do, but because it is the thing to do to build this community and make it better for generations to come.
Good evening. Tanya Nyman, I have two children in East Baton Rouge Public Schools, and I live in District 7. And I'm going to speak, take my time on the Plan 22, the nine-member plan, to speak in opposition. According to the analysis, I saw that it only has three majority African-American districts which clearly violates Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. But I want to talk about the fact that there is no acceptable nine-member plan. The 2014 reapportionment, which reduced this board from 11 to nine members, not only reduced the number of majority-black districts in violation of the Voting Rights Act, it dramatically increased the number of constituents allocated to each school board member. The increase in population and geographical size undermines the integrity of our democratic elections because it makes candidates more dependent on campaign contributions to run a competitive race. And since this board was downsized to nine, campaign contributions and spending in our school board elections by super PACs and out-of-state business interests has increased exponentially. Michael Bloomberg is just one of the billionaires pouring hundreds of thousands of dollars into our school board elections. In 2018, super PACs spent anywhere from $50,000 to over $100,000 in individual school board races in East Baton Rouge Parish. That was in districts where there was a race. Three of you were unopposed in 2018, which meant there was not even a pretense to a democratic election. I don't believe you were unopposed because you were universally beloved by your constituents. I think that prospective candidates knew that because you were supported by the pro-charter billionaires and the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, you were effectively unbeatable. That makes a mockery of our American ideals. We are supposed to be a republic. We are supposed to democratically elect our representatives. The nine-member map prohibits that because of the incredible size of these districts. So I don't care how often the Baton Rouge Area Chamber or the out-of-state billionaires or the wealthy pro-charter folks in this parish keep repeating the bogus talking point that a smaller board is more efficient. That doesn't make it true. A smaller board is not more efficient. A smaller board is autocratic. It is undemocratic. It is contrary to the ideals of this nation. It is un-American. The Baton Rouge Area Chamber and others who pushed for that unjust and un-American reapportionment in 2014 were able to do so because their wealth affords them, among other things, an air of respectability. But let's be clear, it is not respectable to rig a governance structure so that the rich and powerful can effectively dictate the outcome of elections. I believe the best choice is the Finney 15. 15 single-member districts will restore the ideal ratio of elected officials to constituents, but I understand there is no support for the 15-member plan. And even though I'm still speaking on the nine-member plan, instead, please consider that the last plan approved by the Department of Justice was an 11-member plan. That is the true benchmark plan. The best 11-member plan is the Where Collins 11. You should, at the very least, support the Where Collins 11 since it will restore some integrity to our elections.
Good afternoon. The word of the day is growth, and my name is Caleb Holmes, and I reside in President Adams' district. Our community has grown over the last decade, and with that growth, there have been many political, social, and other changes to our community. Even today, with the committed passage of the state legislature of Senate Bill 189, there is a strong possibility that we will have an increase of residents, constituents, in EBR Parish school system jurisdiction. This gives an even greater cause to increase the size of the board to 11 members. Our community should be looking at real pathways to a brighter future. Our school board, our school board, that is supposed to be democratically elected and publicly accountable, should respect these changes to our community. Step Up Louisiana's Parent Union and various other partner organizations and many more constituents and individuals here today are strongly suggesting that this school board select the Where Collins 11-member plan. This 11-member plan allows for the nuances and the diversity that has occurred in the growth of our school system. It allows for the central tenets of democracy, for the intimacy of constituents to actually be heard, seen, and accounted for when it comes to the resolutions and the things that affect all students, parents, and constituents. An 11-member plan allows each constituent to fully exercise agency over the one thing that cannot be taken away from them, that is their power. Our school system stands at a fork in the road in its grand gesture of democracy, and we must do our due diligence and adequately, proportionally reflect the community that we live in. This current school board must support and provide an equitable, proportional, and constituent-focused plan and map for the next decade. We must do this, not only for ourselves but for our children. We can do this, and we must do this. If we don't take, if we don't take advantage of this opportunity before us, the only consequence for this board is litigation and lawsuits. And given the current fiscal state of the board, I don't think that's a good idea. Let's use our resources mindfully and respectfully, support and pass the 11-member Where Collins map and plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Joshua, Power Coalition for Equity and Justice. I know we've sent in a couple times our analysis with Tony Fairfax, the demographer that we retained to help us guide us through the redistricting process. It's a very strong analysis and has been backed by a few attorneys that he has spoken with, myself included. Just want to reiterate, lifelong resident of EBR, this is my passion. My kid's three years old, but as soon as she's able to go to EBR school, she will. And so I am very, very motivated to have this board increased by two seats tonight. So I want to summarize Tony's analysis because it's a pretty strong one, and I know I've already said it earlier, but it is in your emails, but I do have hard copies should folks need it. After reviewing the final plan choices using the Best Criteria Index, Finney 15 and Where Collins 11 were the top two plans. These plans had five and four out of 10 best criteria totals, respectively. Each of these plans performed better overall than any of the other 17 plans that were analyzed. However, there are other maps included after the criteria elimination process. These plans consist of the following: Finney 11, Finney 12, Finney 13, and Finney 14. Finally, in order to choose the final plan, the ultimate criteria may be determining the acceptance number of districts that the EBR school board desires. And would like to hint and mention, there is no nine-member plan outlined in this analysis. Additionally, Power Coalition for Equity and Justice, along with partners that have come up here, and as you can see, has filled the room, have been working on this process since January, if not before. We've been having town hall meetings, we've been knocking on doors, educating the public around the redistricting process and making sure they have the tools and resources to come here tonight and express their concern. The redistricting process that started in January of this year for the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and many education advocates and parents have been actively engaged throughout this process unequivocally, advocating for a plan that includes both equitable racial representation, in compliance with the Voting Rights Act, and an increased number of the single-member districts. As we near the end of the process, with 19 proposals under final consideration, advocates and community stakeholders have coalesced in our support of the Where Collins 11. The Where Collins 11 plan provides for six majority-black districts, four minority-white, and one swing district. It is also the best and only attempt by board members to both meet criteria of the VRA while also incorporating the public's desire for single-member districts. Additionally, we implore and we urge every single board member tonight to vote in favor of the Where Collins 11 plan. Again, as I know Cedric Floyd mentioned earlier, he has his analysis, we have ours. There's enough tools and resources to make the educated decision around the Where Collins 11.
Good evening, board members. My name is Anne Patton. I am a product of East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, as are my four siblings, and my son is currently enrolled in EBR schools at Parkview Elementary. Usually, I watch the streams at home, and at dinnertime on a school night, it's tough to come. But it's usually unsettling to be watching public comments fall on deaf ears when board members listen to the speakers and then vote in opposition to that, to which they're being asked. I would rather not be in the room when that happens. It is easier to be disappointed at home, but tonight I am here. I am here to voice my support for not a nine-member board, an 11-member board. The Where Collins 11 plan is the only of the three, only three, one of three of the 19 maps that are legally binding per the Voter Rights Act. It is important for the board to look at their constituents and the students that are enrolled in East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, and not having a black-majority board disenfranchises those students because that is what the demographics of our school looks like, our school system looks like. Something, another point that an 11-member board would reduce the number of constituents per board member, maybe lessening the load or being more available for communication from the board members, as I have never gotten any email back from my particular board member. For a body that prizes fiscal responsibility, it would be prudent to not have a legal battle fresh out of the gate with picking one of these non-legal maps as proposed. The vision of a redistricting plan should be equity with one person, one vote. By the way, that's the only legal action as well. As a public servant, please choose to serve your public. Here are the comments brought to you by these constituents, the direct stakeholders. I am one. I'm a parent of a kid in these schools. The families and children served by this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Valencia Johnson. I'm the president of the East Baton Rouge Parish Association of Educators, and I support the Where Collins 11-member plan. And I would like to say to the 22, Plan 22, that if the adults can't follow rules and laws, how can we expect every student, every day, to? This is ethical, as where as imperative, to the furthering of the school district. We have to do the right thing by our children, our constituents, the community. And the only plan that does that is the 11-member plan. So I ask you to not do it for yourself. Do it for the students, do it for the community, and those people who are elect, who will elect you this coming fall. Thank you.
Okay, which map?
The 11. Tanya Nyman, again, to speak in support of the Where Collins, Where Jackson Collins map 11. And most people have made great points about it, mainly that it's highly rated, it's along 10 criteria, satisfies the Voting Rights Act, it gives us racial proportional number of districts, six majority-black districts. I also wanted to provide a little information, historical information, and forgive me, I didn't prepare this as well, so I'm going to read it too. It's, and it's from the, what I affectionately call my treatise, "A Good Law Is Hard to Find." Tanya Nyman, anybody want to find it? They can Google it. And I did give copies to every board member for those at home. According to a 1971 Advocate article, CP Council Malls Board Remap Plan, there were once provisions in the plan of government for adding elected officials to reflect population growth. Such a provision makes sense. State statute allows local boards to have up to 15 members. It was assumed that as the population increased, the number of members would increase in order to maintain a reasonable ratio between elected officials and constituents. Another article from 1971 provides additional evidence in support of increasing the number of members on our school board, as well as an ideal ratio between elected official and constituents. According to a 1971 State Times Advocate article, the East Baton Rouge School Board increased from 11 to 12 members following the 1970 census in order to adjust for an increase in population. The perfect representation figure they were striving to achieve, 23,763 constituents per member. That's 20,000 less than our current district ideal population size. So that, the 11-member plan doesn't get us quite to 23,000, but it's certainly an improvement. And for that reason alone, I hope you will support the Where Collins. Where Jackson Collins map 11. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other.
Good afternoon, everybody. Gino McLaughlin, Power Coalition for Equity and Justice, parent, got two kids that reside here in EBR Parish, and more importantly, also a voter. Couple of facts here. The board was not always nine members. I think we all know that. It's been stated several times. Also, I want to get, to recognize all the people that came out here today to speak in favor of this 11-member board. There are a lot of, not only your constituents, but we also have passionate people that have, that are impacted by the decisions that you make consistently, right? And so I also just wanted to give those individuals that showed up and took their time to, you know, be acknowledged here today. Oftentimes, this board does not acknowledge the people and the work that is done and the time that is spent in front of you. And so if you won't do it, I certainly will. With that being said, though, the board was not always nine members, right? We know that. When we increase representation, we also increase our capacity to more fairly to more fairly and equitably represent students and parents. It's not the job of this board to listen to special interest groups. Some of us know who those are. But instead, I think we should listen to the data. I think the data tells us exactly what we need to know and that, in this particular case, the 11-member board is the best choice for this particular vote today. A city that's primarily black and minority deserves an opportunity to have a board that's reflective of their concerns, and that's exactly what 11-member board will do. An 11-member board will also decrease the workload on you, the board members. I think that should be important to some of you. And then also a fact, and I think this is where I will leave things. We will sue if we don't get the things that we need done here today. I don't think that anybody here joins a board like this wanting to get sued, wanting to waste taxpayer dollars. And so when we have an opportunity actually to listen to the people and get additional representation that more fairly and more equitably distributes the work and also includes the parents and students that stand before you and speak on behalf of all these things consistently, I think it leads to a result where we end up with lawsuits. And so, brother, I don't think that you want to defend the board in another lawsuit, but that is something that we will have to do unless we get the representation that we here deserve. So again, I'm speaking in favor of the 11-member board. Don't even want to talk about a nine-member board because that is not what your constituents have consistently told you here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jessica Everhart. I'm a parent of two students in EBR. They're now in high school, but they've come up all the way from pre-K in the EBR system. And I've been to a number of these meetings and to one of the informational workshops. And my tendency is just kind of hanging back and listening. And I don't like getting up to speak. I usually write y'all letters, and I've written to all of you. But today, I realize it's important to stand up and look at y'all in the eye and say that I would hope that you would vote in favor of the Ware Collins Plan. I think it comes down to just basic fairness. Our population is growing. The demographics indicate that, in all fairness, we have to honor the racial makeup of our community. And so it's only fair to give proportional representation to the people who vote for you. And the other thing to look in the face is the numbers that are staring at you, which are the possibility of a huge expense of a lawsuit for taking a risky choice of trying to preserve the status quo. So I hope you look at those very simple numbers and vote to do the right thing for the next few years, decade or so ahead of us, for us voters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fairleigh Jackson. So I guess this time I'm going to be speaking on the Ware Collins 11, which is the map that I support. But here we are with two maps on the table, so it's kind of hard to just speak in support of one without addressing the other. The Ware Collins Map has clearly been something that many of your constituents support. We have no idea what kind of support the Plan 22 has been given, if any. We don't have the public comments that are submitted to the board ever read into the record here. I mean, we're definitely going to do a public records request to see what that kind of support looked like and see if you listened to your constituents. But I will say that I personally have gone through the entire portal where we have access to all of the comments, and I do not see one comment in support of that map. I see dozens and dozens in support of the Ware Collins 11 Map. And then what's almost equally, if not more important, I've never heard one board member talk about Plan 22, what the merits of it are, why anyone would vote for it. I don't know if that's going to happen. But yet, when we look at Ware Collins 11, we have something created with input from four board members who have reached out to each one of you explaining why they want this map and asking for your support of it. So I think that's all very important, not just your constituents, listening to them or smirking and laughing when they're talking at the microphone. But I also think it's important to listen to your other board members. So I support the Ware Collins 11. Very proud of the board members that worked on this and your support and all the work that you've done. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment back to the board. Board Member Lannis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm trying to gather my thoughts to even begin where you started with a conversation of this sort. The first place I'll start is this, though. East Baton Rouge Parish School System is 142 years old. In that time, there's never been a shift in power that we see tonight or that's going to happen moving forward. What is the most interesting thing is this. When we look at maps, and I said this from the very beginning, the maps are not clear to the point where there is a shift in power, not a toss-up seat, not anything that's leaning. But if there's not a clear shift in power in maps, it is not something that I can support. And it is clear tonight, there is only one map that shows a clear shift in power, and it is the 11-member map. In saying this, I also say this. There was never, ever, ever a conversation or even a holdup on any maps whenever the majority was Republican. We never talked about a toss-up seat. When we switched the map down to 11, I'm sorry, to nine members a few years ago. But tonight, when there is a shift in power, a clear clarity in the data that supports that we should have a minority-leaning district, now the conversation comes up, which brings a lot of different questions, not just from board members, but from our community as a whole. So tonight, we have some serious questions to ask. And this is no knock at, I'm going to say something else, because this is no knock to you, board colleague Baloo. But I will also say, we've been looking at where the swing would happen or where the district will switch, and it happened inside of your district. I think that it was going to raise eyebrows regardless the fact that you were the one that put that map forward, and now it is something that we have to vote on tonight. And it would have been the same thing if it was on the other side and I had put a map up and I presented it to the board, and it was something that we had to vote on. While I know it's clear that you can do that, it's still going to raise eyebrows. I won't even belabor the issue tonight. There is only one map that we can vote on, where we will not find ourselves inside of a lawsuit. And it is unfortunate because we had a lot of time to work this thing out, but it just simply didn't happen. So because it didn't happen, again, there is only one clear choice. That is the 11-member map. And I would hope, I would truly hope that all of my colleagues can get on board with this because if not, it's going to send a clear message across our community what needs to happen. And to the people in the crowd, I think y'all already said it tonight. If you don't get what you want, guess what? You can get it in November. Make sure you remember it. Make sure you write it down. Make sure you take a picture. Make sure you video it. Show it to your kids when you go to school. Show it to your families. Show it to your neighbors. If you're riding the bus, show it to the person on the side of you when you go to church. Show it to your pastors. Show it to your congregation. Do not let this moment go away because that is the only way that we will change what is happening inside of our community. You all came together, and I applaud you tonight. My hat goes off to you for having the courage to come here to speak tonight because a lot of people simply probably either couldn't come, wanted to come, but probably were afraid. But you did the biggest part, and that's coming to that mic and using all three of your minutes to say how you truly do feel. The only thing I would ask is, again, don't forget this moment because this is your moment to change what happens in our community and the trajectory for our students. It's not going to change until you all vote and continue using your voices the way you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Lannis. I do want to make sure I point out this EBR SB Plan 22. Nine districts with three majority-black districts seems quite similar to the retrogression that was being explained. And I want to, because we're getting ready to point, explained in an earlier comment, and because we're getting ready to vote on this, I would like to ask, very briefly, for Mr. Floyd to, in particular, not this whole presentation, but in particular, please explain, is Mr. Floyd in the room? Okay, please explain what retrogression is. Okay? The example of retrogression in this school board as it relates to the 2014 map, or excuse me, plan, and the implications as it relates to the proposed Plan 22.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. When the 2010 Board took effect, January 2011...
I'm sorry, if you just back up to make sure people understand what retrogression is.
Yes, ma'am. I was getting ready to say, yeah.
Okay.
I was getting ready to say that the Board took effect, 2011, had the responsibility to redistrict. And it did voluntarily in 2012. And it did a plan with five black-majority districts and six white. That's your benchmark plan that the Justice Department, if you go to court, do because this is the same Board, the same redistricting. I was getting ready to get to it. What happened is that set the standard for redistricting. And the regs say that you cannot disenfranchise voters. It's not candidates, it's not elected officials, voters. And what happened is that the nine-member plan went from six white districts, five black districts. With the nine-plan, it went to, six whites districts stayed in effect because District 5 is white majority on Election Day. And that's one of the factors. So it was retrogression when the 11-member plan was replaced with the nine-member plan. And you're trying to build on that foundation because five of the 11 is a higher percentage than three of nine.
The term, because we not, me and my colleagues not necessarily experts on the different terms. So I want to make sure my colleagues understand, in particular, what retrogression is.
And it's in the regs right here.
Okay.
A proposed plan, this is Reg 7471 at the top.
Okay.
A proposed plan is retrogression under Section 5 if the net effect would be to reduce minority effective enfranchisement on Election Day. Effective exercise of the electoral franchise.
Okay.
Okay? And that's what you're clearly doing. And just so happened, you did this plan without Section 5 preclearance.
Okay.
It was in midnight, right before the 2014 elections. And really, when you go to court, the court is going to look at the 11-plan as your benchmark plan because that was the last plan approved by the Justice Department. And the nine-plan that you have run for office two times is really a bootleg plan.
Okay. And then we have on the table Plan 22, which again has, out of nine, six majority-white, three majority-black. Does that appear to set the stage for continued retrogression?
100% because this is what happened. It's not a swing district. Because when you did the nine district, and I had a chance to look at it in 2014, it was District 1 or whatever, was 63% white voter registration. So that's swinging. And then the white-black turnout, the white turnout was 10% higher than black. So it made it 73% on Election Day. So really, when it comes down to the swing district, on Election Day, is 4,000 more white voters than black voters in the swing district. And that's not swinging. Because a black candidate does not have an opportunity to get elected. At least, black voters don't have a chance to elect anybody. So this is the same-old, same-old in terms, and let me just tell you my experience. The only demographer in this state have been called of 16 Section 2 cases testifying in court in the middle district, nobody else. You can say that you're an expert or whatever, but have you been to court with a plan? The only one.
Mr. Floyd.
Go ahead. Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, yes, ma'am. What I'm trying to say is that...
And I think the point has been proven. Colleague Ware Jackson has a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice President Collins, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Okay, thank you, President Chapman and Vice President Collins. Mr. Floyd, I wanted to ask you something while you're up here around the points that you need to check on around retrogression and dilution. Because, you know, I was on the Board in 2014 and voted for a nine-member plan. At that time, there was a threat in the legislature around reducing the size of this school board to a seven-member district with two at-large districts, two at-large board members included within that seven, which would have made the territory even larger. We thought, at least this board member and, you know, some of them that I spoke with, thought that it would have been a good compromise to move from the 11-member to a nine, because that was in the middle, and no at-large members. There really wasn't much talk about dilution or retrogression. So these are new terms to me. But from the information that I received, first, let me read this little short paragraph, and then I'll get to this piece where I need a little more clarity around the different points, different steps. I know we took a couple of steps to avoid dilution, as far as what I understand now, looking at basically the population and perhaps voting-age population. But I know there are other steps that you need to go a little deeper on. But I'm looking at the U.S. Department of Justice, Section 2 Analysis Discriminatory Result. Just that first paragraph says, "Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits, among other things, any electoral practice or procedure that minimizes or cancels out the voting strength of members of racial or language minority groups in the voting population. This phenomenon is known as vote dilution." And then I looked a little farther in this document where it speaks to retrogression. And we have this, it's in that Federal Register, Volume 7471 is what's at the top of that page. And it speaks to, it says, "A proposed plan is retrogressive under Section 5 if its net effect would be to reduce minority voters' effective exercise of the electoral franchise when compared to the benchmark plan." Now, I am not clear on what the benchmark plan was in 2014. I think it was, perhaps, was supposed to be the 2012 plan that we passed that was precleared, right?
Yes, that's what it's saying on 7470. Yes, ma'am. It was the benchmark plan that was precleared in 2012.
And it says, "Congress clarified that this means the jurisdiction must establish that it's not, that its proposed redistricting plan will not have the effect of diminishing the ability of any citizen of the United States because of race, color, or membership in a language minority group defined in the Act, to elect their preferred candidate of choice." So it seems that it's really about the voting power of the group that is in that particular district, that they would have enough voting strength, enough horsepower, so to speak, to put their candidate of choice in office. And then, a little later, it speaks to some different pieces that should be involved in figuring out whether it's, whether your plan... figuring out whether it's, whether your plan will be retrogressive or have that effect of dilution. Could you explain what the different steps that should be taken? Because I think that we may be under the impression, as we probably were in 2014, that we did everything that we were supposed to do as far as making sure that our plan was a strong plan and certainly a legal plan. And I don't think, I know this Board member certainly wouldn't have voted for a plan thinking that it was out of order, especially thinking that we're going from a 6-5 Board to a 5-4. But in effect, from what I see in this information, we actually went from a 6-5 Board to a 6-3 Board. But on the surface, it looks, it looked like a 5-4, especially with this face in the seat of District Five. However, you know, I have been re-electable because, you know, I have a very diverse attitude, so to speak, you know, I'm not polarized in one way or the other, and represent the district well, and have been re-electable. But from what I see, it really wasn't the strength of, the voting power was not really in the hands of the black people in that district, based on what we saw on Election Day, what we saw, what we see in the voting-age population. So could you kind of go down a little bit into what we were really supposed to be looking for to make sure that we were not presenting and moving forward a plan that was retrogressive?
Is it any way possible that you could get this put up on the screen so people could see this page?
What page is that?
That's about East Baton Rouge School Board, District Five. I think you had it loaded, it's loaded in the-
Yeah, it's loaded in the-
Yeah. Let this page be put up.
Let me see, which one, which number, which page number is that? One, two, three.
Which page?
They're working on it, Miss Warrick.
Five.
Fifth one?
No, keep going. One more. Yes, that's this one. Correct. Thank you very much. Under Section 5, retrogression, it states, although comparison of the census population of districts in the benchmark and proposed plan is an important starting point, starting point. In two sentences down, it said, "For example, census population data may not reflect significant differences in group voting behavior. Therefore, election history and voting patterns within the jurisdiction, voter registration and turnout information, and other similar information are very important to an assessment of the actual effect of a redistricting plan." Okay? Just wanted to put that in, because that was done in this report. What you have before you is the benchmark plan that was approved by the Justice Department in 2012. And it showed District Five at a black percentage of 70.56%, vote-age population 66.90%, and a plan that was not precleared by the Justice Department because of Shelby County in July of 2014. This is the makeup of District Five. It added 9,541 people. It added 11,143 whites. So it went from 27.12%, we're talking about District Five, to 47.19% white. So it bumped up 20.07%. Just so happened, when it comes down to the 2012 plan, you had 23,349 blacks, and that was reduced by 2,228 in District Five, to make the black number 21,121. So the black percentage in District Five went from 70.56%, a good black majority, to 49.54%, a decrease, a retrogressive decrease of 21.07. Same thing happened when it comes down to voting-age population for District Five. 2012 plan, 25,164. Because you had the increase going from 11 to nine, you added 8,261 more total voting-age populated people. When it comes down to whites, it went from 7,692 to 17,132. So that was an increase in white voting-age population, people in the district by 9,440%. Went from 30.57% to 51.26%. Now, this is supposed to be a so-called black-majority district. So the white voting-age population percentage in the 2014 plan that's still using today, which I call a bootleg plan, it increased by 20.69% white voting-age population. The black voting-age population went from 66.90% black voting-age population to 45.32%, decreased by 21.58, and that made it retrogressive under Section 5 standards, and it make it dilutive under Section 2 standards, because just so happened, I've had the experience over the last 41 years, 2000, St. Bernard School Board went through a legislative act to reduce it down to the parish government, five districts and two at-large. I was the expert for the plaintiff that we sued in federal court and won, and St. Bernard School Board is still 11 single-member districts with one black majority. Also, back in 1993, the St. Mary's Parish School Board tried to reduce from 15 to 11, and that plan was rejected because I did alternative plans to show that it was dilutive, the plan that they proposed, but they did go, because I did do a fair redistricting plan with 11 members. What I'm saying is that the plan adopted in 2014, in the dark, there was no Section 5 preclearance, and also the people around in Baton Rouge did not know the fruits of this plan, such as what was going to happen on November 2014, the makeup of the district, the makeup of the electorate, what was going to happen in a runoff in December 14. And I say that to say, if you look at one of the last pages in, go forward with the slide. The next page. The next page.
The 28th.
Yeah, right here, this one right here. So, right, that's this one. So if you would look, these are the official election returns from the Secretary of State, and it shows District Five. November 2014, this is the first election for the nine-member plan, the purported black-majority district, District Five, and it's not. So it had voters, black voters, at 13,963, white, 12,742. But when it came down to turnout, white turnout was 13 points higher than black turnout. Sometimes that happened around the country, in East Baton Rouge also. So on Election Day in District Five, it was supposed to be a black-majority district, it ended up being 7,409 whites, 6,271 blacks, meaning that in a black-majority district, purportedly, it was 1,138 more whites to vote. So that makes it not a black-majority district. And you took a 70% black district in your 11-plan and converted it to a minority black district, and you didn't have to, because you already had a legal 2012, 11-member plan, and if you couldn't do any better than that, you had to be stuck with 11-member. And that will be the rub in court, that you did not have to reduce down to nine, because you voluntarily did the 11-member plan in 2012 and got it precleared. So that is the difference between retrogression and dilution. Dilution is, under Section 2, when more black districts can be created, or you didn't do the standard what you found. And when it comes down to Section 5, the exercise is retrogression, that you cannot disenfranchise black voters from what you founded. And you have done that with the nine-member plan that you approved in 2014. It's just that nobody's taken you to court yet, and they have all the way to December 31st to take you to court, because that 2010 plan is still in effect all the way there. And that has served as the basis for your nine-member plan according to the 2020 census. And also during that time, your black population in East Baton Rouge has increased. If you could go before, go back-
About 60.
Don't allow me to cut you short, I just want to make sure that what we're getting right now is not necessarily going into the presentation for answering your specific question.
Yes, ma'am, I'm not in my-
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. If you could go to page three. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, that was my-
Page three. Yes, ma'am, and I'll be finished.
The summary.
That's, yeah, that's fine. Yes, yes, ma'am. What happened is, over the last 20 years, the East Parish, East Baton Rouge Parish School District has seen a drop in white population of 59,442 and increase in black population of 28,915. So the black-white percentage in your school district is 53.8% black and 46.2% white. To be reflective of these numbers, I'm only going to talk about the legal standard, which is the 11-member plan, and where Collins' plan fit that bill in terms of, it should be six black-majority districts and five whites. And that's the standard of the precleared plan, what you did in 2012. And in my history in 40 years, it has not been a school board, Section 2 lawsuit has been, that's been won by the defendants. Been around, I was part of the St. John's School Board case, I was around part of the St. Bernard School Board case, and been part 16 Section 2, nobody else has testified in court in all three districts, labeled themselves as an expert, but what time, when have you testified in court, and the judge has saw fit to say, "Your plan and what you propose is credible." Only person in Louisiana like that. And what I'm trying to say is that, that whoever's going to sue got up until December on the 2010 census, because if you have a vacancy, that's what you have in place, the 2010 census. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to, I don't know if Mr. Hefner is available, if he's on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
I had a question. Do you know if Mr. Hefner can hear?
Mr. Hefner had a 6:00 PM meeting, he had to step away from it. He will come back later, though.
I'm on right now. I don't know if I'm logged in or not.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here. I had a question a while back, late March, I asked Mr. Hefner via email, because I was curious about the retrogression or retrogressive, any kind of retrogressive action, because this was something new to me. So I asked our demographer, and I said, "I have a question. The Justice Department precleared or approved an 11-member plan in 2012, and the Board switched to a nine-member plan in 2014. Is the current nine-member plan and the proposed nine-member plans you are now recommending retrogressive to the 11-member plan precleared by the DOJ? If not, why?" And the, his answer, I'll just read just the first paragraph, Mr. Hefner, and then I'd like your comment with the question I'll ask. He answered, "Ms. Ware Jackson, actually, this would be a two-step analysis. The first is whether the 2014 nine-member plan was retrogressive to the approved 11-member plan that was in effect until such time the 2014 plan was implemented. And then the second step is whether any of the proposed plans I drew were retrogressive to the current nine-member plan in effect, now using the 2020 census. Based on this information, Mr. Hefner, and I'm thinking of District Five, which was, I believe, the one that probably had the most change in population deduction of black population and increase in white population, whereas District Five went in the 2012 plan that was precleared from a 70% black population to 49%, subtracting 11,000, 1,100, I'm sorry, blacks and adding 11,000 whites. What would you say to that as it relates to retrogression?
The time to have challenged the retrogression issue was when the 2014 plan was passed. That was your window of opportunity to do that. Once that plan went into effect, that became your legally enforceable plan. That nine-member plan with 2020 population is considered the benchmark plan. That is what your current districts are with the 2020. Any new plan can't go below those, the viability of the minority districts. If I recall correctly, you're around 49% on your minority population, which your current districts at the 2020. The plan that you're discussing now, Plan 22, actually increases the percentage of some in District Five, so it actually improves those numbers. I don't see that as being retrogressive. The other three minority districts are still viable districts, so they're not retrogressive in their nature either. But your last legally enforceable plan is the one that's currently in effect right now, not the 2012 plan that was precleared. That was never implemented, that is not your legal plan right now.
Said the last legally enforceable plan? Is that what you said?
Is your current plan.
The last legally-
Your current nine-member plan. Your current nine-member plan is your last legally enforceable plan to be replaced by whatever plan the Board adopts.
I think you'd probably have, you know, some other experts debate that, but-
They can debate all they want, but that's what it is.
Well, we're, we're putting a whole lot of trust in our demographer. We've had a whole lot of back and forth, and, you know, we requested a while back, back in January, that our demographer put together a plan, a nine-member plan with majority black districts and an 11-member plan with majority black districts. And there was a lot of pushback, you know, at first, there was some agreement on that, that the work would be done. And then a little later, there was a lot of pushback, and basically wasted about a month of time before any work was done. Then when the work was done, there were memos that went out with the nine-member plan that basically refuted whether it would be acceptable in a court. So, you know, and the plan really wasn't acceptable to the four Board members who had asked for both a nine and an 11-member plan. So we looked elsewhere for some help in coming up with the plan. We wanted both the nine and 11 to be on the table, but as the clock ran out on the time for us to produce any plan that would have been a viable plan, we chose to take Dr. Finney's 11-member plan and ask outside demographers to help us with the goals that we were looking for, for District Five, and for District One, to be increased to at least 65% black majority and 55% black majority, respectively. And with the time running out on the clock, and we only had that 11-member plan, we took Dr. Finney's and devised, and they were successful in doing that, in following all of the guidelines that we were looking for. So that's, we put that on the- So that's, we put that on the table, especially since there was such a loud outcry from the public for an increase. And the difference between a nine-member board and an 11-member board really hasn't been significantly different. When we had an 11-member board, I know that there were complaints about some board members in there, but it was mostly around personality styles and just the ability or inability to get along with everybody. And in, in any group, you're going to have that kind of, of situation. And even with our, our nine-member plan, a nine-member board, I just want to remind you that with this nine-member board recently, around our, just after our last 2018 election, this board saw so much controversy. We had, we were dragged through the mud internationally because of the actions of, of a board member. So you can't always say that it's about manageable, being manageable. You know, it's about personalities and whether you can get along, you know, how you present yourself in public, you know, how you serve your public, whether you want to serve your whole public or just a few. So, you know, the arguments around a nine-member board and 11-member board, I've served on both, and we've had controversy with both. And we've had a whole lot more controversy with this, with this nine-member board than we did with the 11. So I don't have any reason to believe that moving to the 11-member plan, which would be more reflective of the district and certainly be one that the community at large is asking for. I have not seen, I've not even heard much comment from Mr. Hefner around that Plan 22. I couldn't tell you what's in it, except that, you know, I'm hearing that there's only three black-majority districts in there, and I think that would be an insult to the entire community to do something like that. If we were in, in 2000, I'm, I'm going to be, I'm, I'm almost done, y'all. But look, in the year 2000, if you go back, think back, 20 years ago, the population has changed. We have 60,000 less white people in this district than we did in, in the year 2000. In the year 2000, the, the black-white ratio was 58.4% white and 41.6% black. In 2010, the ratio was 49.5% white and 50.5% black. That's only like one point difference there. But the black people in this district were in the majority simply because they were over 50%. Now, what happened between the year 2000 and 2010, we had a lot of white flight. Remember, we had districts that pulled away. We had people that moved out of the district. There was a lot of, a lot of movement going on. But there was also an increase of 30,000 black people between the year 2000 and 2020. So, you know, we're sitting here in a district that is now 60,000 less white people, 30,000 more black people. And in 2000, when it was turned the other way, we had a 6-5 board. So I would like to know, what is the difference now that we have just the opposite? We've got a lot more black people in a district, a lot less white people in a district, but for some reason, we cannot fathom having a majority-black representation on this board that would reflect our district correctly. It, you know, it, I can't tell you the answer to that, you know. But what I do know is that this is supposed to be very simple. It should be about math, about the ability to read, literacy, and, and of course, history because we have to go back those years and look at those things. Those are simple things that we teach our kids in the district all the time. You know, it's simple math. You know, sometimes I think if we, we put a fifth grader up here and let them do the math, we'd get the right answers. But because we have adults that are in the, in the loop here, things get a bit cloudy. And we talk a lot about transparency and about public trust, but I don't think that we really walk the talk. You know, there's, we talked a lot about the reasons that we, for instance, the reason that we even put out an RFQ to, to find a demographer was in the interest of public trust and, and transparency. Yet when it came to the table, we couldn't, we couldn't trust our, our own committee to, to choose what looked like on the surface in any other committee report. It would look like a no-brainer that we would choose that, choose that demographer. But when it came down to it, we had excuses about, well, we need someone local. We need the guy that we used in 2014 was the real reason. We wanted to go back and use the same demographer. So, you know, we had the majority of the board choose to hire that demographer. During that time, I heard my fellow board members saying some of the same things I heard myself saying in 2014 when we went through this redistricting process. And I was relatively new to the board, but certainly new to redistricting. And I said that I was going to trust the expertise and experience of my colleagues that worked in this industry. We had a colleague that was studying public administration, one that was always at the, at the Capitol, still does now, and constantly working with the legislature. And we had a demographer, an expert, who we trusted to help us to produce a plan that would be acceptable, a nine-member plan that would be acceptable. I don't know if everything was quite on the table that should have been on the table to make a decision. And looking at this information that I see now, when we go deeper and look at voter records and voter registration.
Is now exiting.
All those things. You know, I, I have to wonder, but looking at all of this and, and going from 70% to 49%, certainly looks like retrogression to me. And going from a 6-5 in 2012 plan to a 6-3 in 2014, but a 6-3 that you can't really see because I'm here, you know? And it looks like it's a 5-4, but it's not. It's a 6-3. And it's not about the person in the seat. It's about the people in the territory having the voting power to be able to elect the person of their choice. And look, clearly, I was the choice of both black and white people. But I guarantee you this. If there had been a Republican, a strong Republican in 2014 that ran against me when I had four people in the race, I had three Democrats and one Republican running against me. And I made it to the runoff. And thank God for some people, lots of Republican friends who shopped me around to everybody they could think of and told them, "Don't be fooled by the R. This is the one that you need to vote for." And that Republican did not win. I had no idea about voting records and checking this or that. I didn't check all of that after the election. I was just glad to get through because I tell you, that was definitely a war. But I tell you, if that had been a strong Republican, one that had been respected in the Republican Party, I would not have been sitting in this seat after that 2014 election. And in 2018, I was re-elected, but I ran, I had another Democrat running against me, but there was no Republican running. And I'll bet you, if that had happened, I would not be sitting in this seat. I say all that to say that we're here to serve people in the district. And most of us have, all of us can run again. But this is not our seat. It's the seat of the people. And they are the ones who should have the voting power to be able to elect the candidate of their choice. Now, who knows who is going to run in the election coming up or the one after that? I'm more concerned about the one after that. I am re-electable, apparently, but maybe the one who is to follow after me will not be as electable or re-electable as I am. So I just urge all of you to, to please, you know, we may have made some mistakes in the past, but this is our opportunity to correct any mistakes that we may have known or may not have known that we were making. So I'm, I'm asking that you support the 11-member plan. I know some of you feel like, oh, God, you know, we went through so much to get to this nine, but I don't know if it was really worth it, you know? Our, our community is not supporting this. I don't think all the board members even know details about Plan 22. I couldn't tell you a thing about it. I really couldn't. You know, the only information I, I received was at the last public community meeting when Mr. Blue spoke with me about it and, you know, talked a little bit about it, but before then, I had not really seen that plan. And I, I really don't recall having it part of any of our board meeting discussions where we actually went through and, and went through all the plans. So, you know, I, I guess that's, that's all I can say about it, except that, you know, let's just stick to the math. You know, it's, it's simple. It's supposed to be kid stuff, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, some history. But, you know, I know we're not the best in the district when it comes to math and especially history, but these are some areas that we really need to be looking at. And apparently, we should have been looking a lot more at the math and at the history in 2014, and we certainly have the opportunity to do this now. And so I just ask my colleagues to take all that into consideration when you, when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Mr. Howard.
At the appropriate time, I would just like to call for a roll call vote.
Well, first, the first thing we got to do, we, we'll, first thing we got to do is close, um, agree to close nomination of maps. So if that, if you don't mind, you want to make that motion to close nominations for maps? Yeah, Mr. Howard will make the motion to close nomination. Follow me along, doing the right thing?
Yeah, well, let me, let me speak to that in just a second, Mr. Howard. We actually adopted Ms. Collins' proposal. Her proposal was that the vote be taken by paper ballot, and so we want to follow that as, as close as we can to respect that process. But that, that information can be made public and available to anybody who needs it. They can see the vote, but, but the voting for maps will be by paper ballot as adopted by the board.
And, and Mr. Howard, my point, I wasn't even there yet because in that process, it says that we, we have to close nominations, right? So we just need a motion to close nominations. So Mr. Howard, seconded by Mr. Goday. Any comments from the board, seeing no comments from the board on closing nomination? Any comments from the audience on closing nominations?
Before you close nominations, what was just discussed about the voting process, the ballots, what's in the memo, you said it could be made available to the public. The vote should be read here in the meeting. Okay, that wasn't clear just now, so I'm just making sure that we're following the
I'll be brief. I wish that somebody had nominated a 15-member plan, but that didn't happen. And you have one legal reasonable plan in consideration. So I guess we may as well see whether this is going to be yet another party-line vote after you close nominations and turn in your votes, or if we're ready to move this community that closed the swimming pool instead of letting black kids in it and hung on to desegregation for 50 years rather than doing the right thing, if we're ready to move into the 21st century or not. Thank you.
Any other comments on closing nominations of maps? Seeing none, I'm going to lean on counsel. We, back to the board. So we now, seeing no comments from the board, we, we will vote on closing nominations. Madam Secretary, please conduct that vote.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Yes.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Yay.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District 9, President Tapman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So nominations are closed. Now, as outlined in the process, we will conduct a vote to select a map. Will be conducted by using paper ballots. And we each have paper ballots?
Correct.
Yeah, I have one. I just wanted to make sure y'all did. And so how do we do this? Are you going to come around and collect them?
Um, Mr. President Tapman, the terms of voting on the second page, if you'd like, I'd like you to read that into the record to make everyone understand the terms.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. So counsel has suggested that I read in the following terms for vote, for voting. A, each member may only vote for one map on each round of voting. B, once all ballots are collected, the board secretary will read the name of the board member and their preferred plan. C, a map that receives no votes or has the fewest number of votes will be eliminated from consideration. D, if all other maps have been eliminated, the plan with the most votes fails to receive enough, to receive the five votes, all maps will return to consideration and the process will begin again. If a single redistricting plan receives favorable votes from at least five board members, the system shall with utmost urgency advertise that map to the advocate to include the following specifics. A, a full-color map big enough to be clearly legible. B, the date at which the final ratification is proposed, a special meeting on May 5, 2022, immediately prior to the committee of the whole. C, dates, times, and places during which the maps and supporting documents can be viewed by members of the public. D, dates, times, and places for the public hearings during which comments of up to three minutes each will be accepted from members of the public present April 7, 2022, and April 21, 2022, at 5:00 PM at the central office, prior to the regularly-scheduled committee of the whole and board meetings. And E, proposed text of the submission to the Secretary of State listing which precincts are to be included in each election district, and if applicable, how many precincts are to be split between the election districts. So we fill out our paper ballots and you collect them? Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that. I'm sorry, Ms. Bernard. Ms. Bernard?
I have a question.
I have a question. Is there any reason, Mr. Shamblin, that we should sign our ballot?
Just initial in the box, that should be good enough.
Initial in the box, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm turning this meeting over to you, the one that's right after this, the panel figure.
District 1, Mr. Blue, Plan 22. District 2, Mr. Lannis, Ware Collins, Plan 111. District 3, Mr. Howard, Ware Collins, Plan 111. District 4, Ms. Collins, Ware Collins, Plan 111. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson, Ware Collins, Plan 111. District 6, Ms. Dyson, Plan 22. District 7, Mr. Goday, Plan 22. District 8, Ms. Bernard, Plan 22. District 9, Mr. Tapman, Plan 22.
Plan 22 is adopted, and Mr. Goday moves that we adjourn this special meeting. There will be a, there will be a public hearing immediately following this one. The public hearing, we don't have roll call, but we have to do roll call, right? Public hearing? Yeah. I'd like to call to order this public hearing for the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, Thursday, April 7, 2022. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District 9, President Tapman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins. District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 3, Mr. Howard. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
Okay, we go into, we have a quorum. We go into item B1 to take public comment on redistricting maps. Before we do that, Attorney Shamblin?
Well, let Mr. Hefner provide an overview of the map selected to give the public information.
All right. Mr. Hefner, are you there?
I had a previous scheduled adoption. Can you bring me up to speed as to where we are right now?
Gwen, you want to?
I'll make sure I'm on the right map.
Mr. Hefner, we have just begun a public hearing on the maps that was voted for and selected by, by the board. That's Map 22, so we would need you to give us an overview summary of that map and then allow the public to give comments. And we will rely on the rules of comment, which is three minutes per speaker.
Okay, well, I'll speak to the effects that the plan has. It maintains the nine membership that you currently have, maintains the same ratio of minority districts that you currently have. What it does do, though, is it improves District 5 in particular by about 2.5%, 3% over what we call the benchmark plan, which is your current plan with the 2020 numbers. If you recall, those benchmark numbers were around 49 and some change for District 5. This does improve that without diminishing the effectiveness of the remaining majority-minority districts. So the plan is not retrogressive in that respect. The limitations that we have with regards to incumbency, everybody is in their districts. They're about as compact. They're all contiguous with the exception of the issue with the northeast end of the parish being separated by Central. With regards to the state statutes, the main one that we take a look at is the use of precincts. No district under this plan splits more than three precincts. So we're within the state statutes there, and no precinct is split between more than two districts. So we're within that part of the statute. The precincts that form the boundary, the split precincts that form the boundary between Baker and Central and EBR, those don't count against those numbers. So we're in good shape with regards to that. And of course, deviation is one of the primary things we also look at, which is the one man, one vote side of it. And Plan 22 does a good job of that. It ranges from a, on the total population, from a minus 4.38 to a plus 4.94. So that's within the plus-minus 10%. Or I should say overall 10%, plus or minus 5%. So that is an overview of 22.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
You're welcome.
Let me see, I don't see any questions from the board. So we will take public comment on Map 22.
Good evening again, Cedric Floyd. As I listen to Mr. Hefner, retrogression is a Section 5 term. And Section 5 is no longer in place since Shelby Colley. So it's a question of this plan being dilutive. And that's a Section 2 term that I'm very familiar with because I've been part of 16 Section 2 cases, all successful. And the question is this. Would East Baton Rouge Parish School Board being black, white, 183,981 blacks, 158,237 whites, 46.2 to 53.8? If this was a large school district, going to districts, exactly? If this was a, a large school district, going to districts, exactly how many black-majority districts would it be? And exactly how many white-majority districts would it be? And a question of is that lower than that, that is dilutive? Because that's the standard the court is going to, when it comes down to the dilutive. And this plan only has three black-majority districts? Because the definition of a black-majority district is voting-age population threshold. Back in 1984, did McGrenton lawsuit, and the Fifth Circuit defined a black-majority district as voting-age population. According to Plan 22, District 5 is not up at 50%. That's the first threshold. Next, you look at voting history, you look at voter registration, and you look at turnout election day, that you are able to do, that black voters are effective. And just as the 2014 plan, blacks do not make up the majority of voters on election day in the 22, in Plan 22. So in 2020, since this information, you are saying that black voters are only entitled to three black-majority districts? That's what you, that's what you're saying by Plan 22? It's not how you found, I'm just saying, dilution is looking at the black-white, how many districts can be created? And you are saying that you could only create three black-majority districts as defined in the court? Thank you very much.
Offer a few more comments on map 22? I guess what my, my question is, is why do you not believe that a school district that is overwhelmingly black, and let's all be honest, has seen significant white flight? Why do you believe that that district doesn't need to reflect the population of its students? Like, what, what is the rationale if it's not power? Like, I genuinely want to know, is it that you all believe that you all would be better stewards of black students' interests? And if so, I'd love to know what those interests are and how you found those out. I'd love to know if you plan to, or in the past, have you engaged with black voters in such a way where you feel as if increasing representation on this board would somehow decrease the quality of services that this board can provide to students? Because I don't understand this. And I know, having had practical conversations with candidates and political parties and campaigns before, I know that we have some very candid conversations about what we think certain voters do and what we think that they don't do. So I know that there are certain stereotypes about how black voters vote and what their interests are. And I know that many of those stereotypes, particularly in majority-white districts, often lead politicians to thinking that they don't have to go and cater to the black vote. And when we gerrymander districts like this, again, we only reinforce that. I think that our school board members should be as in tune with their constituents as any political body in this community. I think that you should know exactly what the interests of your students are, what the interests of those families are, and you should represent that on this board. And if you don't want to do that, then you're in the wrong line of business. I get that there are special interests here, but let's be practical, politically practical. This is a term-limited board. Whatever power that you are fighting for is limited. So think about the future here. You're not accruing power for the next 20 years. Think about the future here. What is best for the students of EBR? And what's best for the students of EBR is to have representatives that no matter how messy it makes this board, no matter how inefficient it makes the process, at least the voices of the families and the students and their interests are actually represented every single time that you all convene. I'm not here for trying to have quicker meetings. I'm here for trying to have more effective, more representative, and a more equitable system for our students. And so I, I don't buy the argument that this is about efficiency. I want to hear an articulation from each and every board member that's still here: Why 22 makes more sense than the Ware-Jackson-Collins 11? I just, I want to know why. I yield my.
If you can't respond to your community's call for a very specific action on this topic, why would you have any credibility that anything you do until December 31st, when you're hopefully all replaced, is going to be in any way in the best interest of this community? Nobody spoke, including the five of you, in the public meeting in favor of that god-awful plan you just chose to publish. I'm embarrassed. My wife communicates regularly with folks all over the country, and they wonder, what in the world is it with these people in Baton Rouge? Remember, Baton Rouge closed a public pool, a public swimming pool, in order to keep the blacks from mixing in with the whites. Baton Rouge hung on to desegregation until the, the last possible moment, and then whined about being forced into busing, and we're still suffering from the effects of that. You had an opportunity tonight to do the right thing, and you just completely blew it. I doubt if any of the four of you that didn't draw the plan even know what Plan 22 looks like. So I'm wondering, is it all about keeping the power in the hands of the whites? Is it because the chamber told you to? Is it because, you know, God forbid you be responsible to your constituents, it's important to have 43,000 people in each district, so the districts have, the seats have to be bought instead of campaigning for on a door-to-door basis? And seriously, what is it? There is nothing admirable about Plan 22. The, the Ware-Collins 11 isn't great, except in every possible measurable way, it is better than the plan you adopted. And none of you had the guts to tell the public why you voted the way you voted. So picture a moment, 20 or 30 years ago, you're elderly, you've got your family gathered around, and little grandchild, great-grandchild, niece, nephew, whomever asks you, is it true that Baton Rouge had an opportunity to move into the 21st century? And you made a point of doing everything you could to keep Baton Rouge from moving forward. By God, you might have lost the Civil War, but that doesn't mean you've given up. I mean, what possible excuse are you going to use to be able to sleep tonight? I can't imagine. I mean, is it power for the business community? I mean, it's not because your kids in school will be better off under this plan, because unless I'm mistaken, none of you have kids in school, public school at least, at the moment. You know, I'm just mystified. I wish one of you would have the guts to explain your vote. Thank you.
I'm disappointed, extremely disappointed. And if y'all remember, the first time I ever came up and spoke to this board, it was about body language. And the body language that I see now, all of a sudden, when I'm up here, I see a couple of members looking. But the entire time beforehand, when everyone was speaking and airing their grievances, people's heads down, twiddling their thumbs, thinking about what they gonna have for dinner, after the horrible, disgraceful, and frankly, just ugly action that the five of you pulled, I'm extremely disappointed. And I'm not the kind of person who likes to drag people through the mud and call out their name like that, but I'm extremely disappointed. You see those three letters back there? EBR, East Baton Rouge? When I see that, I see every black resident, every black resident, every student, every day, but specifically every black resident, that you choose to abdicate tonight. That is rude, that is shameful, that is disgusting, especially considering the history that this parish has. Thank you for adding another stain on EBR. I'm an expat from Shreveport. I moved down here. I chose to stay here. And this is what you give us? Shame on you. Shame on Member Blue. Shame on Member Bernard. Shame on Mr. President Tatman. Shame on Member Dyson. Shame on Member Goday. I want you to take everything that was said here tonight, I want you to internalize that, and I want you to seriously think about what you have done. Because in all honesty, you do not deserve to be re-elected. You do not deserve to stand. You have abdicated your responsibility to every black resident, and specifically every constituent in this parish, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, native, or otherwise. Shame on all of you. Do better. And to do better, I have an idea for you. Stand down. Resign tonight. Every single one of you. Every single one of you. Shameful, shameful, shameful. I yield the rest of my time.
Well, Caleb says he's disappointed. I'm angry. I'm quite ticked off. This is not democracy. We, the American people that filled the room tonight, told you that the nine-member map was illegal on all levels. It did not meet the requirements. As a result of you voting on an illegal map, you are literally intentionally diluting the black vote. That's a hard stop for my organization, for the folks that filled the room, for the folks that sent you hundreds of comments for the last couple months. As my colleague stated earlier, Power Coalition, our partners, LDF, our attorneys will make sure that they reach out to you first thing tomorrow morning. Taking my Power Coalition hat off to say, just like we mobilized within our community to put John Bell in office, to put Mayor Broome in office, we will make sure we do the work to organize against every single one of you and put others in office that actually represent us. Thank you.
Every time, Jennifer Harding, District 5. Oh, I should point out, for the people at home, the only board members remaining in the room are the white board members who just voted to put a racist map forward. The black members have walked out in disgust, so people who aren't here know what's happening. Every time I walk out the door to come to one of these board meetings and leave my husband and my son, my husband to finish homework with him and get dinner and everything, he jokes, like, that, what are you, a masochist? Because he knows that when I come here, it's futile. It's an exercise in futility, because you never listen to the people. You never listen to your constituents. You sit up here, and you smirk, and you shop, and you bow your head down, and you say, sometimes you say, that you care about the students in this district. The students in this district are black, okay? I don't know if you noticed that, because if you noticed that, how could you have possibly just put forth the literal worst nine-member plan? Maybe you just want to create disruption in this district. Maybe that's it. I don't understand. It seems like the goal here this evening, because you had all of the analysis. The public, the members of the public with their volunteer time, late at night and on weekends, did the work, found the resources, and provided you with the information that you needed to make a smart choice. And you chose to ignore all of that information. You wanted a nine-member map? President Tatman, you said you wanted a 4.41. I don't know what happened with that plan, because you went with a plan that is going to land you in court. There are organizations that are ready to take you to court. It's disgusting. I don't know how you're gonna sleep at night. And I don't know how with a straight face you can come here and say you really represent the families that make up the body of, of the EBR school district. It's disgusting. Connie, you didn't learn anything, honey. You didn't learn anything. And Mark, you're just as bad. You're going down in history, just like her.
It's okay.
Good evening, Tanya Nyman, District 7, Mike Goday's district. Many of you know that I've been involved in education advocacy for a very long time. I actually got started fighting against the breakaway school district, the majority-white, wealthier area in the southeast portion of the parish, attempted to create a breakaway school district. And parents mobilized in order to fight against that effort, because we recognized that it was a, a move that would exacerbate the racial discrimination in our parish. I actually, and I'm, I'm gonna ramble, because I have to say, I actually got my hopes up a little bit, that y'all were gonna adopt the right map. And so I'm, I'm not prepared for this. But I've always distinguished between bigotry and institutionalized racism, and I think it's very important that people understand the difference. You don't have to be a bigot to end up supporting institutionalized racism, because institutionalized racism is a system of rules and regulations that effectively disenfranchise people according to the color of their skin. And so that's what this map does, by failing to make sure that there is a, the appropriate number of majority-black districts. When we would go down to the Capitol and argue against that breakaway school system, and try to explain the way in which it would effectively discriminate, discriminate against the black students in our parish, the, the proponents of the breakaway school system would say, you're calling us racist, we're not racist. And you know, you would say, you know what, your intentions are beside the point. It's the effect of your decisions that matter, and the effect of your decision has to effectively disenfranchise the black population in this parish from being able to elect the, the appropriate number of candidates of choice. Now, the other thing that's interesting that I've learned over the years is that somewhere along the lines, I don't know how they let this happen, but you, some places require that you prove intent in order to demonstrate that there was a, a motive to discriminate along racial lines or racial bases. And so I find that curious. One thing I've been remarking throughout this whole process is the silence from the five of you, that there has been no extensive discussion of the maps, no one has shared their justification for why they supported that map. Mr. Blue, I'd never heard you once ask Mr. Hefner to engage with that process of creating a map. It was remarkable. And so it, it does call into question y'all's motivation here, and I don't think silence is the answer. And I'm not gonna shame just you guys, because the other thing I'm also gonna acknowledge is that wealth and power never concedes its wealth and power, right? It will always manipulate the structure in order to maintain the wealth and power. And so I would think that this is, that the shame of this isn't just reserved for the five of you, it's also extended to the wealthy and powerful in this parish who tolerate this, because we know that that doesn't happen without their blessing. All those folks, the very wealthy, that get to sit at home.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Nyman.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I'm Michelle Bradford. I'm not surprised, so I am bummed that I'm not surprised, but kind of driving from work. I was like, oh yeah, we're going for nine, that's what y'all doing. But I think what's really important for the, like, for folks at home that are watching, and for, just for the record to show, is that there is not an incentive for EBR to be good schools, not from our school board. There's no reason for us to have a map that's equitable, because the goal is not to be, there's no good intent in any of this. And just like Tanya was saying, there's puppeteers that will be there, there's money that's influencing all of y'all's elections, that will influence the next round of elections. And the only unfortunate part is this 6-3 map makes it even harder for all of us to do our quote-unquote "job," because most of us are volunteers doing this work, that really care about this community. And this also reminds me, and I was talking about this earlier, about when I went to college, I had never heard of Wilmington, North Carolina, and how Wilmington, North Carolina had so many black folks that were in power after slavery, and just magically that wasn't in the textbooks, and we never heard about how black folks did well for themselves. And I didn't learn that, like I just said, until college. And this is very much a rebranding of that. Even though, whether it's the school board, whether it's the legislature, whether it's the United States Supreme Court, y'all are destroying our communities in order to, like Tanya said, uphold wealth and power, and just because you're not using daggers or burning down our houses to do it, doesn't mean we're not fully aware. And so the most important thing, even if you're offended, please learn and understand that you're being used as a tool by white supremacy, capitalism, to exploit our children, and these maps are evident of that. And so we don't need to keep talking in these neat forms of language and just keep me our vocabulary so kind. When we all need to be speaking, and folks at home, we need to be speaking in real terms, and it goes well beyond November. We have got to save this democracy, because before you know it, it will always be a 6-3, because it will always be the rich versus the rest of us. because it will always be the rich versus the rest of us, and it just happens to present itself as black versus white.
Berly Jackson, District 5. So when I go home tonight, I'm packing for Washington DC to take my 10-year-old and my seven-year-old, who are both students in the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. My 10-year-old is quite the political junkie. He has just been, become fascinated with politics, with policy, the structure, the democratic process is fascinating to him. He's been to many of your board meetings and he sits and watches intently. Our school board member, who I would like to acknowledge that, school board member, Ware Collins, and, I'm sorry, Ware Jackson, and, now, I got the map in my mind. Ware Jackson and Collins are actually sitting in the audience in solidarity with the constituents that have worked so hard. And I think you all need a round of applause, everybody in here. And especially Ms. Ware Jackson and Ms. Collins. So what I get to do tonight is try to explain to my 10-year-old son what happened tonight. And even though he is 10, he knows what deviation means. He knows DOJ Black, or the many different definitions of DOJ Black that have flown around in this room. I get to pull out a map, honestly, one that he hasn't even looked at, because you know what? He has actually looked at a couple of the nine-member maps that we thought might have been presented tonight, not this one. And he's gonna know what deviations are, and he's gonna know what those populations are, and he's really not going to understand why this happened. He has asked me in the past, do they always vote yes on things? He has quizzed Ms. Ware Jackson about, do they always make up their mind before they go in there? And he says, what's the point, Mom? What is the point? What was the point of this? I can't even explain it to my 10-year-old. And I am one of many parents here who have dedicated so much time to this, who have overcome a learning curve that I think some people sitting up here didn't even attempt. It is incredibly disappointing. And like all the people in this room that have worked so hard, I will also be working to make sure none of you are reelected.
Chino McLaughlin, Power Coalition. I'm not surprised. If I said so, I would be lying. Disappointed, sure, but not surprised. Bit jaded in this process, have been doing this long enough to know that oftentimes we arrive at these decisions before we even walk in the rooms. Sometimes those of you walk outside the room to make sure that your votes are aligned, right? And that's cool. That's cool. I've seen it before. There are five of you up here right now, but we know that this is a 6-3 map. You know that. You understand that. That's been described to you, that's been articulated to you. We don't have to look confused, we don't have to talk to ourselves either. We know what it is. It's a 6-3 map. You know, I'm a product of this school district. My two daughters are still in school in the school district, right? I have the resources that many of you do to send my kids to whatever school I want to, whether it be private or not, right? I choose to put them in the school district for a reason, though, right? And I also work daily, daily, inside the schools to make sure those students, that some of you do not see, some of you do not know, that they are seen and that they are heard. But see, your decision tonight tells them otherwise, right? I went to Robert E. Lee High School. Some of you know the story. I'm tired of talking about it, right? At that time, you know, Confederate flags waved prominently, prominently, around that school, when I attended that school, right? I dressed a little bit differently, had a little more hair at that time, but I'm still that same 11th grader that felt the need to have to stand up to one of my teachers some many years ago and talk about the history or the miseducation of black students. And that was done by board members, right? So when we think about the 60s and 50s, a lot of times, you know, many of us like to say who we would have been during those times, right? There were board members that voted that school to be named Robert E. Lee High School, right? And I remember during that discussion, first it was in 2016 and then came back around in 2020, many of you said that you wouldn't have done that, right? But here in 2021, guess what you just did? You did the exact same thing. You did the exact same thing, and that will have the exact same effect. That, too, is racism. That, too, is violence as well. You see, we sit back as young black students and we have violence inflicted upon us daily. Some of those are microaggressions, but some of those are macro, just like this. And understand that this is on your legacy.
You know, at the beginning of this process, some, you know, friends who you've heard from, you know, asked if I could try to help, you know, didn't know if I could. You know, I was encouraged, though, when we came in, the first meeting, Mr. Hefner talked about a 4-4-1, listened to a lot of different people, presented a lot of different ideas. And I guess I was really naive. I really thought, you know, well, look, I know my friends, they talk about wanting to expand the board, and that sounds great, but look, you know, the worst thing that's gonna come out of this is that at least we'll correct the obvious disproportionality of this nine-person map, we'll get a 4-4-1. The few discussions I was able to have with some folks, it sounded like that's where we had it, sounded like that's where the demographer who you hired was at, that's where we started with. I never really heard anybody say anything about not at least getting there. To come in here today, you know, I do a lot of work in Louisiana politics. I have this kind of rule that I keep with myself to do it over and over again, to, you know, kind of hope for the best but expect the worst. And it's rare, it's very rare these days that I get surprised or shocked by an outcome. I guess I just, I don't, like a lot of people, I feel like this is one where you really do owe people an explanation, at least. I mean, there's no justification for a 6-3 map. You know, I'm at a loss for words, which is also kind of a rare thing, but it's, you know, I thought at least a 4-4-1. There's really no way to, you know, you could have avoided a lawsuit, you could have avoided all sorts of trouble. It just, there's no explanation for it. I would love to hear an explanation for it.
I'm kinda short here. Good afternoon, board members. I didn't come up and speak when everyone else did, but I felt that it was more appropriate for me to do it now. So, Corinne is upset. As you know, most of everyone here is, and a lot of the ones that left are, too. But I wanna read something to you, which I rarely do. Ethical violations is defined as something that is spoken, written, or actioned that violates a company's documented code of ethics, mission, vision, values, and cultures. Our school system have a motto that says, "Every student, every day." But yet, every student, every day, in this district look like mine. See, my child is an African-American male. Our school system have over 43,000 children, and more than 83% of them are African-American. So when I say that we just committed an ethical violation, we committed an Office of Civil Rights violation, we committed a Department of Justice violation, we even committed an American Disabilities Act violation, and if you have the time, I can even explain it. Every single day, we tell every student, every day, that they matter, and we say that we're gonna educate them. But are we really and truly educating them when we ourselves are not adhering to the same exact motto? Every student, every day. Every student, every day, today, just learned that we can actually get the first African-American female elected as the Supreme Court Justice, but yet here in East Baton Rouge Parish, we can't get a board that represents the demographics in which they serve. That is teaching our students, every student, every day, that they don't matter. It also teaches our students, every student, every day, that we commit ethical violations. Regardless of how many kids look up to you, what did you tell them? See, children learn from the behavior in which they see the adult do. They're great imitators. They mimic it. What behavior do you want Corinne and the other 43,000 students in East Baton Rouge Parish to imitate? Do you want them to imitate that their voice don't matter? That they are not important? That they are property? Because that's what we just did. We just took this district back to the civil rights era. That is something that we, as a body, need to look at. Because tonight, every student, every day, did not count, and neither did their parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corinne. Seeing no other comments from the audience, that ends our public hearing. Motion by Mr. Goday to adjourn. We're gonna go right into the Committee of the Whole meeting because we are late. And so I will call to order this meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Thursday, April 7, 2022. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District 9, President Tatman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Gwen, are you getting staffed? Good. You're getting staffed here.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 3, Mr. Howard. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yeah, we called the roll, and we have a... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Good point. Why don't we take a moment for everybody to log into Board Docs? Thank you, Mr. Goday.
Madam Secretary, did you say we had a call? I mean, I see the call. All right. We shall now move to Item B1, update from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So we wanted to first, just wanted to recognize that we had our first annual Spring Fling, which was a big success. The Spring Fling is a district-wide employee recruitment fair that is sponsored by the Human Resource Department in collaboration with other district teams. I'd like to say thank you to the principals, our human resource team, transportation, communications, EDs, chiefs, securities, all of the help that we had from school leaders and also some of our staff. Just to acknowledge some of the partners that did a lot of contribution to the Spring Fling is, we'd like to recognize publicly, Mr. James "Big Brown" Joseph, who is there, Mr. Clay Young from the Clay Young Show, Reggie Marion from the BR Proud TV. We'd like to thank WAFB, WBRZ for event coverage, Tyrese Pleston, the band director at Scotlandville, Pre-Engineering Magnet Academy for live music, Sean Jeffreyon and the arts team. Our sponsors, Columbia, Ambera Dodson, who sponsored a lot of the festivities there with our young people, Focus Foods, Louisiana Lemonade, Capital Seafood, American Federation of Teachers, Louisiana Association of Educators, and APAL, Associated Professional Educators of Louisiana, who supported the recruitment for us to be able to get a lot of different folks to, for a lot of our openings that we have for vacancies. If I fail to acknowledge anyone, please forgive me. I know that I appreciate your support and look forward to partnering with you all at the upcoming Fall/Spring Fling for 2022. So just wanted to say thank you for that. Another thing, just wanted to highlight some great things happening with our students. Today, we had the STEM Challenge. I know a few board members here that were there. The East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, we hosted our first annual spring STEM Challenge called Operation Lifeline. This innovation challenge was adapted from Klein, ISD, and Jason Learning. All students in the competition had designs prepared and attended a day of design where partners from across Baton Rouge vetted students' projects. Today was pitch day in the final round of the STEM Challenge. The following teams were rewarded as winners for the respective categories. We had Baton Rouge High Magnet, Westdale Middle, La Salle Elementary, grades three to five, and then Glen Oaks Park Elementary School, grades pre-Cater 2. I know that Board Member Goday and Board Member Howard, you were there, and I walked in, I saw the kids really doing a great job, just seeing how much they talked a lot about the science and the work that they were doing. So just wanna say thank you to all the partners who contributed, who supported our STEM Challenge, and a special thank you to those board members who judge those things today. I also wanted to highlight another good thing that our students have done is the Spelling Bee, which is going on right now at the Knock Knock Museum. So tonight, we are hosting our first-ever district-wide Spelling Bee in partnership with Knock Knock Children's Museum and in the Baton Rouge Police Department. For those who can attend, we are hosting the Spelling Bee tonight and tomorrow at Knock Knock Children's Museum, starting at 6:00 PM both evenings. We wanted to say good luck to the spellers. And the last update I got, I had, is we have about 200 families and community folks supporting kids right now that should be enjoying themselves in spelling. So we're just excited that we were able to get the Spelling Bee up and going, and I'm really excited about that. One other event that we wanted to go ahead and just highlight that's coming up will be the Poetry Slam. The district is proud to announce that we'll be hosting our first-ever district-wide Poetry Slam, which will take place at Tara High School on April 26 at 6:00 PM. The Poetry Slam will feature pieces from our 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders from across the district. We invite everyone to join us and look forward to seeing you all there. Our children are always tremendously excited when our community is coming out. So I tell folks, even if you're not a parent, please come out and support our kids. It really means a lot to them to see the community out there.
Superintendent, would the board members be able to participate?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Put me down.
Okay, so make sure, Board Secretary, we just write that on, and we will have you The other thing I wanted to also highlight again is... The other thing I wanted to also highlight again is we have is Betty's Hope. We're pleased to inform you, our collaboration with Warwick Dunn Foundation, Betty's Hope Initiative, which was a huge success. This semester, the initiative was piloted at Struma High School. You can see some pictures we have up there. Students were able to participate in sessions related to understanding and coping with their loss or grief. During the culminating activity, the students were able to meet and talk with Warwick Dunn in person, receive certificates of completion, and each student was awarded a Chromebook. We plan to expand the program to additional schools for the upcoming year. Special thanks to the Warwick Dunn Foundation, the PepsiCo, and CTG. As many of you know, Mr. Dunn is a product of Baton Rouge. And just excited when you see folks come back to give back in their community. So we just appreciate his support and PepsiCo for what they've done for our young people. Wanted to also highlight that we had our college fair, the Department of Counseling Facilitator College and Career Fair 2022, which was held on Monday, March 28 at Southern University in the Mini Dome. We had more than 2,200 juniors and seniors across our district participated in the fair. There were colleges and universities representing from the state, around the nation, and even abroad. Representatives included members of the Armed Forces and two and four-year colleges and universities with BRPD and sheriff's offices. Students were able to speak with representatives from Top Golf, Main Event, and Employee BER as it relates to summer employment. Special thanks to our partners at Southern University, Chancellor Belton, Southern University Law Center, Chancellor John Pierre, Chief 3000, our yearly collaboration with the staff of the College Center at the Episcopal School of Baton Rouge, who helped support us to do the program. We had children from all over the city attend, and as you probably saw some pictures, it was really great. This is just one of many college career fairs that we will be doing coming up throughout the year. And last but not least, I just wanted to talk through about just our budget timeline update and continued efforts to keep you and the public informed of our budget process. I'd like to invite Ms. Kelly Lopez, our Chief Financial Officer, to update you all on where we are in the budget process. Ms. Lopez?
Tonight, I'm going to give you just a really quick brief overview of the budget timeline. So as many of you know, the timeline, the timeline begins in December when we get the assessment from the property taxes, and that's when we begin looking at sales tax. And sales tax is reviewed every month. Now, obviously, in December, we're only looking at October sales tax. We have a long way to go. But we begin the initial revenue look at. We start getting documentation from our different departments that are provided, and our HR and our superintendent work together to determine the staffing allotment and how we're going to staff the schools for the next year. We began working with each of the chiefs and each of their departments, looking for their needs assessment. What are the opportunities that we have for next year? And we began waiting for the legislature. As you know, Bessie has submitted their requests to the legislature, but it has not been approved. So currently, right now, we do not have an MFP number. We can use an estimate from this year. I don't see MFP increasing. I know that Governor Edwards is hoping to do the raise, so right now, I'm projecting salaries based upon the raise that he has offered. So as we continue down the line, HR will provide allotments for each of the schools and for the central office, and we will, you know, process each one of those into the budget to determine where we are at. The budget will then be reviewed with both the superintendent and the ELT staff. And the budget is going to be noticed in the Advocate, three days before it will be public, which will be May 18, because we will bring the budget to you in June, and we have per state statute, we have so many days ahead of the budget being submitted to you. It has to be available to the public and yourselves. June 2 for the Cal, we will have the public hearing. It will be available for approval at the June board meeting. And for the May Cal, you will have the revised budget for 2122. So right now, we're still trucking along with the budget, but I have every thought that we will bring you a balanced budget in June.
So just wanted to say one last thing, and then, Madam Vice President, that'll be my report. I just wanted to say thank you to just our community in general. We've been putting on a lot of events for children. I know there's a lot of things going on, but the children really find it important for the support that we have. We've been working hard, as we tell folks, is to keep children busy and keep them engaged as they're in their learning. We will be providing more information as we are going to have summer programs coming up, Madam Vice President. If everything works out well, we will have more summer camps in the city of Baton Rouge or this parish than we've ever had in its history. So we will be providing more of that information in upcoming board meetings, from pre-K camps to sports camps to ESL camps, you name it, from every part of the parish. And so we're really excited about that. We were projecting that we should triple the size of the amount of camps that we will have for children in this parish. And so we're just really excited about all the great work that's going on. So, Madam Vice President, that is my report.
Okay, and I see in the queue, Board Member Howard?
Yes, thank you. I don't know what to say, Madam Vice President. So I just wanted to lift up something that the Superintendent mentioned in his report about the Project Pitch Day. You know, obviously, the events that have happened earlier today are disappointing, to say the least, but always knowing and re-centering yourself in the why we do this work is vitally important. And so I'm so glad that I was able to fill myself with student voice before I came to this meeting tonight. The students at Project Pitch were from pre-K to 12th grade. Really show you that there are good things happening inside of our schools. We oftentimes elevate the voice of the things that are going wrong in this district, but today really showed me that there are really children within East Baton Rouge Parish School who are yearning to get a quality education and who are being receptive of a quality education. I started off the morning this morning at Scotlandville, where we hosted a rally around domestic violence and how domestic violence shows up in relationships, even at the high school level. And just to hear kids share their stories, like there are kids who need us. There are kids who want the support, and there are kids who are really ready to learn. Then ended the day at Glen Oaks High School with their Big Buddy Program, where we talked about career mentoring and what kids want to do. So there are kids, and there are good things happening in this district. So I encourage, again, I always take an opportunity to do this, to our media folks. You be ready to knock down the doors when there is a fight or a shooting or something bad happening at the schools. There was not one television station at Project Pitch today. That's an opportunity to elevate the story and the voice of the good things that are happening in this district. Tell the whole story. Don't just tell the story that's going to be clickbait or tell the story that's going to get you ratings. Tell the story of the good things happening so that people can see that our children can do quality things within this district. So just wanted to elevate that there are a lot of good things happening in this district, and I know we spend a lot of time harping on the bad things. So thank you, Superintendent, for mentioning your...
Thank you, Board Member Howard. I was supposed to call you. Board Member Collins. Board Member Goday.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I guess this is for you, Dr. Narcisse, or maybe for Ms. Lopez. With the schedule on the budget, you know, one of the things we continually face is a shortage of teachers. And when in that process will we be able to tell teachers staffing, whether or not they're going to have a job? Because I know we had a job fair, but, you know, one of the things is, are we able to offer positions to those folks at the job fair before they get sucked up by surrounding districts and things like that? So if we could just have some clarity on that, because I know the staffing level, I'm just afraid we worry about getting the last 2% on the budget that keeps us from doing the 98%, 98% of the things that we could do and solidify teachers and things.
Yes, I'll let Ms. Lopez to come up, but I will say, Board Member Goday, that we've currently, especially if it's teaching positions, have given early contracts already to teachers because we know we always have a certain amount of vacancies, so we haven't even waited on giving contracts. But we are going through our process as we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're filling multiple positions. I think, you know, we have, you know, from teaching positions to transportation to, you know, cafeteria workers, and so we are giving contracts early, so...
That was my point. I don't want to let a budget process interfere with an HR process when we know we have HR problems.
So just for a plug, if I could just add, if you want a job, please come to www.ebrschools.org. We are trying to hire as many folks as possible. And also, you know, we also have some growth too, so we're trying to close all those loops. Thank you.
I think the Superintendent answered it beautifully. I only tell you how much they cost. I don't staff them. But I know Ms. Hall is working tirelessly to make sure that we have a full staff for next year.
Thank you very much.
Board Member Dyson.
Thank you. Two things. One, on the summer programs, I wanted to ask, so we've got a good many camps. I've seen some of the arts ones that are already being advertised. And I had a constituent or two ask me about transportation for the summer camps, and I didn't know if we had come to a decision on that.
Yes, Board Member Dyson. So we are providing transportation. We were actually going to wait at the April board meeting, because we're still working out a few logistics to publicly show at the board and everyone just about specifics on the camps, but we will have transportation at many of our camps. There are some camps where it will be parents that will be bringing kids as well. Those are some of our paid camps, which you've historically had. But one of the first things that we're doing is almost every elementary school will be having their second and third graders have opportunity for camps. We have sports camps. So there's a lot more detail that we will provide at the next board meeting to the board, just on those specifics. But we are trying to ensure that access is not an issue for families. So without getting too much more into details, because the team is still working through a few things, we've also been talking to different advisory groups, like our teacher advisory, and we remember elementary principals all today, just for some logistics. So if you give us till about the next board meeting, I'll be able to give you much more specifics.
Very good. So just to reiterate, the second and third graders, did you say at every, every elementary school in the district will have the second and third graders being able to participate?
Yes, yes, and we'll have a list, though. We are working on right now, as we shared, we're going to have, we have multiple camps from EL camps to a pre-K camp. I can't go through the whole list, but our goal is that every community in our parish will have a camp to attend. As the board charting, we're doing this, our goal is to keep children busy and also to keep them engaged throughout the entire summer. And we're also trying to see what the possibilities are to have partnerships with even beyond the camps. So right now, I think we've landed on the times or between, is it eight to 12? But I don't want to give you too much more specifics, and I like to have all the detail to present. So what we will do is, we will add one of our next update meetings. I'll have a section, we'll have Chief Brickhouse bring up specific detail to show with the community, all the camps we have and everything, and also our process on how it's easy for families to sign up for camps, which we'll be working with schools directly.
Very good. And one of the things that I wouldn't call a camp, well, I know we have to make sure that we have adequate transportation to cover our summer enrichment and summer school. So I know that has to be a first priority with transportation. But I wanted to find out where we are on making a decision on, I know, you know, especially with COVID, that it kind of got, came to the forefront that every student may feel, even if they are moving on to the next grade, they or their parents are together, they may decide that they would like a summer academic enhancement program or something with the COVID loss and that kind of thing. So are we going to, once again, open those, the summer schools, the summer enrichment, so that every child can move to their next level, no matter if they were mastery or not?
Yeah, so the summer camps are open to all kids. So we're not limiting, but we're actually...
Summer school, you mean?
Yeah, summer school. So what our goal is to, I want to make sure we provide you with more specifics when we get to next month. But our goal is to not only have children who are remediating, but also acceleration or enrichment opportunities. And so we're providing different camps in different areas. One of the things we've been trying to work through is to ensure that no matter where you live in the parish, you should be able to attend a camp if it's specialized or if it's just a camp in general. And also, we're looking at expansion for summer bridge between for grades six and nine and those things. And so, and there's going to be opportunity for schools also to, you know, do even extra as we continue to provide more opportunities. But I do want the opportunity to share with the board at the next meeting the details to that.
And hopefully, we can do some concentration on literacy and involve some, some physical education-type activities throughout their day. But I very much appreciate that a summer enrichment or enhancement can be offered to all of our students right now, this summer.
Yeah, we should have a projected, if things work out the way that we plan, we should be triple the amount of students in this city. We'll have more camps than our parish has ever had, where we'll have children in the thousands attending camps over the summer.
Okay, thank you so much.
Board Member Lannis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to piggyback off something that Board Member Tremell Collins, I said Tremell Collins. It's a crazy night, y'all. I'm sorry. That Board Member Tremell Howard lifted up, when he said, you know, you oftentimes hear about all the bad things that happen inside of schools and is always reported, but you never hear about the good things. And what I want to talk about tonight, and I'll be really quick, is EBR's school system is making a really strong approach around reducing the violence amongst our students inside of our schools, one of which I want to talk about, because I know a lot of people were not here last week for the press conference, but I had the privilege of being part of a press conference where we announced our new chief of school security, Mr. Robert McGonner. He's actually in the building right now. Former retired police officer, and he just spoke so articulately around what his plans are going to be, one of which will be a one-mile risk assessment at every single school. This is something that we've never seen happen before. This means inside of every neighborhood where our students live, we're going to monitor, actively monitor their approach from leaving their home till they get to school, when they leave school, until they get back home again. One of the things we're also talking about is bringing a stronger approach around anti-violence as it regards our students, because I don't have to tell you all what you see on the news every day. I don't have to tell you what you read inside of the paper when you look and you find out that students are bringing guns on campus. It's happening for a reason. It's happening because they feel the need to protect themselves. And right now, we're talking about anti-violence curriculums coming to our schools so our students understand that they have a real voice and they have people that truly do support them and their families. This is the way that we change the trajectory of violence across our community. My hat goes off to you, Mr. McGonner, and also my hat goes off to you, Mr. Superintendent, for making these approaches. This is what needs to take place, and I look forward to being a part of these conversations. Whenever a gun is being brought on campus, I want to be that board member that knows about it. Whenever a fight is taking place, I want to be that board member that has a hands-on approach to make sure that we are putting our best foot forward, because that's the way that we not only ensure the success for our students, but we also ensure that they get home safe, and that's the most important thing that we can do. Thank you.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I had a question around a budget item. Around, every time we were about to reopen school, you know, parents are out there buying school supplies and teachers are getting ready with their classrooms. And I'm wondering if there's a line item that will show us what the expenditure is on average for an average classroom. I know that lots of times, teachers talk about having to come out of pocket for certain expenses, and parents, you know, have a long list of supplies that they're expected to purchase and bring to the school. So I'm just wondering, on average, if we could have a report on that so we could see exactly what goes into the classroom for everyday supplies?
Yes, we could do that. And also, last year, if you recall, we provided, Ms. Lopez, I just want to make sure, we provided to every teacher in EBR. What was the cost for them to buy supplies? $200 to give a car. And so our goal... them to buy supplies? $200 to give a car. And so, our goal is all the time to try to give teachers funds to be able to get supplies, but we can work on trying to provide the board what the cost would be.
So, teachers are expected to purchase supplies, or is that something that it's supposed to be supplied to the teachers?
So, every school receives their materials of instruction that they submit their orders for in April, and purchasing provides them, and they're delivered to the school in July. Every school, but based upon the student, receives approximately $25 per student based upon their October count. And so, that's the funding that they can use to purchase any supplies that they like, and purchasing will supply it to them. They also receive $6.50 per pupil for graphic arts that they can use either for printing through the graphic arts department, for their printer charges, for paper, for ink, for anything they like. So, that is provided to them every year, and it's in the regular education.
So, like $25 per student?
Yes, ma'am.
For supplies?
Yes, ma'am.
I remember spending a whole lot more than that as a parent in Walmart, trying to get my supply list.
Absolutely. But think about purchasing, think of the buying power we have at Office Depot. So.
Okay. Well, I'd really like to see that. Thank you. See that budget.
Superintendent Narcisse, you hit the accent. Okay. Board Member Dyson.
Just real, real quick. I would just request that we pay particular attention. We have a habitual problem of underestimating our student population for the, for the next year with staffing for our, for the, for the next year. And so, we have some schools that just traditionally, every year are understaffed starting school, and we really need to think about allowing for the true data and really look at, you know, what transpired during this year and would be likely to happen again the following year. So, I really want to make sure that we're staffing very appropriately. And in those schools that are trying to make do with every square inch, they also need the teachers there on that first day of school, because it's a lot of crowds everywhere. So, I'm just asking that. And then, I would also appreciate if Ms. Lopez can provide us, or Superintendent Narcisse, provide us with kind of something that would very clearly show us differences in our current budget and what we're doing with the next budget. So, if there's some changes, I'd like to really have those changes spelled out for us.
We can do that. Kelly, we're good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Seeing no other comments from the board. Superintendent, that wraps up your?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Moving forward with item C1, Facilities, Facility Management Services. Item for consideration, recommended action, consideration of a request for the selection and approval of Facility Management Services. Can I get a motion? A motion from Board Member Lanis, and I think I saw a second from Board Member Goday. All righty. Yeah. Tell me what the, for this particular.
Yeah, you need to make a motion to actually adopt or either accept the recommendation if there's a recommendation.
So, we do have a presentation, just to share.
Okay. Let y'all want a presentation first, and then we can come back to the motions. You want to, okay. Thank you kindly.
So, we're going to let Mr. Larry Williams, who's the head of our procurement, will talk through the process. Larry?
Thank you. President Taman, Madam Vice President Collins, members of the board, Superintendent Narcisse. I'm here to present to you the evaluation committee's process, response, and recommendation based on the evaluation of the proposals for a new facility services management agreement. The advisory group focus, the scoring committee focus was about the school classroom at the school level. That is evidenced by the fact that three of the score, three of the five scoring members are basically principals, they are principals, and they had an ED, of course, who was a former principal involved. So, three of the five were frontline in the school, in the classroom in consideration. We had six companies, six major companies, who provided proposals, ABM Industries, Aramark, Hess Facilities LLC, KBS LLC, MetroClean Commercial Building Services, and Sodexo. Those were the six companies, all proposing full services. They were, they represent a great deal of quality experience. Their proposals were very clear and meeting the requirements. A lot of positive feedback, almost all positive feedback from the references, from current agencies and prior work experience. Their task was, regardless of who it is, their task was identical for us. Kind of an overview, I want to focus here on the evaluation process. You can see the normal processes, study of the vendor responses, the site visits, the reference verification, the team meeting, interaction, and scoring committee activities would be referenced here. I want to focus, though, on the school site visits. I think it's important for everyone to realize that we, early on, identified 20 school sites, and we walked. I walked with these, all of these contractors participated, all six, walked the school sites front to back and went behind the doors to give them a firsthand look at what our facilities really are, what the, what the issues are, what the makeup is, the layout, carpeted floors, vinyl floors, whatever. We saw it all. We, the mix of schools was 11 elementary schools, five middle schools, and four high schools. Each group had a representative school from an older build all the way through a new build, a modern build, as close as we could come to new. So, I think we were able to present to all of these contractors a very clear picture of what their challenge would be with our facilities. I think that was a very important piece, and a little bit unusual in an RFP process to have this kind of depth, but we did that, and I think that was a good process, and I got a lot of positive feedback from the contractors and all involved, making sure that we got that done, but we did. The timeline is presented here. You would note that this is an extremely long event. We, the, was advertised, the RFP was advertised on July 15th, and here we are considering our decision today. There's two, basically, two reasons this has taken this long. The hurricane, Ida, struck midstream in this. Contractors contacted me and expressed their concern that they could not finalize their proposals with their pricing with their subcontractors, because many of them were actively cleaning and working and trying to protect their own assets. So, obviously, we extended the time, and of course, that time of the year carries us through the Thanksgiving time and Christmas time. So, it did take a longer time than we anticipated. I think the main culprit was the hurricane. Finally, the evaluation scores reveal a very relatively tight grouping in points resulting from having quality vendors, major companies who are quality, all quality people, credible contractors, excellent presentations. We did, we actually had all of these contractors participate. They came here in this room and presented to the committee directly in person. And all of that was done in a very excellent manner. We couldn't have asked for a better group to pick from than these six companies. They're, they're all capable of doing this work. Our recommendation, as prescribed in the RFP, based on the high score, is Hess Facilities Management. We, the committee would recommend that we employ them as our facilities services management company. I would like to run through some key points to consider in that decision. Their business is 100% education. Records show a strong stability, the source of funds, growth rate of at least 15% annually. Strong positive responses from references. I actually personally did the reference calling for Hess. For example, Duval County Public Schools in Jacksonville, Florida, has 196 schools, 129,000 students. They would not consider having anybody else in their, in their facilities. They've been there more than three years. They're very happy. There was nothing negative to glean from any reference call. I made three calls. I won't elaborate on all those. I do have notes on those. They were first-class recommended, okay, in every area. I will also add that the others were as well. There was very little to be gleaned negative from references from any of the companies. And again, that, that addresses, I think, part of the reason why you see the score is so tight in this consideration. Okay, that concludes my presentation. I'll certainly entertain questions if you need me to do that. I'm here for that.
Board Member Bernard.
I was just going to ask the superintendent if he had a recommendation, but I heard Mr. Williams said that he's recommending HES.
Yes, Board Member Bernard. I agree with the committee. After engaging with them, I recommend Hess. I just wanted to add a few more things that, based on what we heard that outside of them working with districts, they had strong leadership and diversity partnerships, strong commitment to hiring current Aramark employees, good familiarity with using the business partnership model, evidence to show strong commitment to employee training, detailed transition and implementation plan, detailed quality assurance plan, and employee retention focus. That was really important, I think, the committee really valued a lot. And then, the other part was they were very strong and positive response for references in terms of other large urban districts similar to us, providing high-quality services. And so, my recommendation to the board is in agreement with the committee.
Board Member Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you for presenting this proposal to us. I think the work that is going into it has been diligent. I think it has been professional, and it is well-supported. The only difference, I would say, is I would go with ABM, and for several reasons. One, I think the scores dictate, based off what you displayed and presented to us, that is very, very close. And after you do your research, what you find is that Hess was at once a part of ABM, so I think that they have learned those services from ABM Corporation. But the most important thing that I think that people can't see right now is the level of minority participation that ABM is offering to the people who are doing the work on the ground every single day versus every single vendor. On average, every other vendor outside of ABM is offering 45% on average minority participation, where ABM comes in at, ABM comes in at 65%. I think that is something that we just cannot simply glean or gloss over. I think that this, one, it rectifies the situation that has happened with Aramark for years as regards to people who have been working on the ground, which are essentially the people who do majority of the work. But I think also, what it does is it shows a forecast of what is to come. When the Amazon facility is created and completed, when they hire workers, they're going to hire their workers at $15 an hour. As it stands right now, the people who are doing the work on the ground can only really afford to play, afford to pay their workers $9 to $10 an hour. That means when Amazon opens, they're going to essentially take away a huge workforce block that the people that are on the ground doing the workforce, they're going to take them away, and they're going to hire them. Who's going to, who's going to do the work then? And I think if we get locked in at anything that is less than 50%, I think that we're going to have an enormous problem that we're not looking at. And I think we have to pay very close attention to that. And I think besides that, the people who have been here working on the ground have given back to our schools time and time again. And it is time now that we give them relief and that we also support them in the process. So, again, while I do appreciate the recommendation, I'll say again, I think ABM is a company that we need to go with as a district, because I think they have the wherewithal to help us. But also, I think the minority participation alone is enough to help our district grow and essentially help the people who are on the ground doing the work, who also send their kids to our schools. It gives them a leg up to actually make more money in the process. Thank you.
Board Member Howard.
Thank you, Madam Vice President Collins. I just want to say that I am super, super excited that this contract is finally on the board agenda. It has been a relationship from hell with our previous vendor. And I say that because I don't think that people realize the importance of this level of contract. I think that every, no matter what you do for a school system, your primary focus should always be centered and rooted around students. The most complaints that I've gotten since I've been on this board for the last four years have been about simple low-hanging fruit about the management of our facilities within side of our schools. So, I just want to say that I'm glad that we are here and that we have a recommendation that's freeing us of a relationship that had an opportunity to be a good relationship and had an opportunity to really serve the students of this district in a way that's viable, in a way that shows that they care about kids. And so, whoever gets the contract, I want you to know that even though your contract says maintenance, your contract is still rooted and centered around students. The experience of our students is the most valuable customer that we have within this district. And if they're not going to facilities that are upkeep, facilities that are high-quality, then that reflects how we feel about them. Teachers should not be worried about the cleanliness of their classroom from day to day. We shouldn't have to have board meetings and publicly pull the red tape back to have 25 vehicles parked at a school to do proper cleaning that should have been taking place from a day-to-day basis. So, whoever gets this contract, while I know it's a high-money or a high-monetary contract, if you are not centered in the work of students, find somewhere else to go. This has been a nightmare of a contract for teachers getting the bare minimum that they deserve inside of their schools. So, you see this, you see monetary value. If you're not rooted in students, just know, in my last seven months on this board, I will be holding you accountable to ensure that the promises that you make when you sign this contract are the promises that you continue to uphold as you go through and work throughout this district.
Thank you. Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I echo your sentiments. I certainly do, Mr. Howard. I wanted to just express my concern around the contract itself. I'm hoping that we will be very, very careful in how it is designed, so that we make sure that we are actually the beneficiaries. And also, I'd like a little bit more information around the first page, the advisory group, and some of the roles of the people that served on the advisory. And maybe if you could expound a little bit more on how the scoring, you know, what they were actually scored on, so that people will understand that. And I understand that, you know, some of them were scoring team members, others were not. You know, I see some faculty, and I also see a couple of school board members listed as well. And that's a little bit unusual. So, you know, I'd like a little bit of more information as to how this group came about.
Yes, ma'am. The, I was remiss in not mentioning that Mr. Goday and Mr. Howard were looking in the, in the background here, involved in the process and seeing and basically looking at what we were doing. They looked firsthand at the process as we worked through the process. As I mentioned, the group that you have here, you have, three of the five are principals. Basically, they're, they're from the schools. They know the schools inside and out, and the inner workings of the schools. And it is the front line, as Mr. Lanis, Mr. Howard have both indicated, or both board members have indicated, that's the front line. And so, three of the five scoring members were frontline people who are very aware of the issues. Generally, it's typical that I would be a scoring member on a project as complex as this. And then, of course, you have Mr. John Smith, who's the fair share coordinator. We instituted an addendum based on Board Member Lanis's input. We requested that focus be made to reach the 50% participation in the fair share program. And so, that, I think that addresses that part of what you're asking about. We do have a- We do have a slide. My colleagues in IT are able to get to the slide where we can show you the score sheet. This is the score sheet on the board now. This is the, there's multiple parts here. You can't see it all at once. The detailed plan, there are some specific elements to score there that were scored, K through 12, facility, management experience, performance record. Each of those categories has a point value, program quality, program cost. We'll just go through this quickly for the moment, then we can come back to any detail. Fair share compliance. The total point value was 100. Basically, in the scheme of things, you can do whatever you want with a point value, but it's simpler to work with 100% and 100 points. And the proportion can be determined by the group, by the committee, by administration as to what would carry the most weight. I think this is an appropriate, with my experience, this is an appropriate distribution of points among all the areas to have a fair scoring of the various areas that make a compiled score complete consideration.
Of the scoring members, who has the expertise in actually this kind of business? I see that, you know, some people are here that I'm wondering probably would have more expertise in the area of work, like Ms. Scott Spalding, Mr. Chester. They were not scoring members.
Yes, ma'am. They were intimately involved in the process, but they did not score. That's correct.
And it's unusual to have board members in a situation like this. I don't know if you can answer that question, but, you know, I'm wondering how that came about, because normally we don't.
Let me comment on that. Ms. Jackson, I'll tell you that there was no coercion of any kind. The committee was not pressured in any way or felt any inclination to do what, we were not given any directives or any thoughts that would have made us feel pressured to make some decision that we wouldn't make anyway. Let me just say it that way. But, and they did not vote. They, from the onset, they determined that, we did not say to them, "You can't vote." They opted and made clear they would not be voting members because they did not feel it would be appropriate to vote in the process.
I guess the question is, how were they invited to participate in a selection committee when that's usually not what we do? Are you the one to answer this, or someone else?
Well, I don't think I can, I would say that administration and my office worked together to determine that this would be an appropriate approach in such a complex project that is so impactful to the whole district. It's not inappropriate that a board member would be there.
So who chose the committee?
Administration approved the committee. There was a recommendation from my office, basically, and then the administration would approve that.
So who recommended the board members? I hate to, you know, have to get down to the nitty-gritty of it, right? So who recommended the board members? It's just highly unusual. You know, I know in the past, we've been advised not to be on, you know, not to even ask about being on any kind of selection committee in any form, any manner. Any insight, anybody?
If you may ask me, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say that, so I was listed on the, and you could take me out of the queue for this. This is my statement, Ms. Collins. So why I am listed as an advisory committee member, at the beginning of this process, I was approached, someone sent an email about selection committees for procurement and X, Y, and Z. I have been very vocal in the past about the need for having a very inclusive procurement process as well as through selection. But this particular thing was, sent an email. I called April, and I said, you know, "I'm not sure what these emails are about. What is this about?" She told me, "This is a selection committee, blah, blah, blah." I responded to some emails. I didn't feel comfortable at the time of sitting directly on the advisory selection committee council. So I sought advice from Mr. Shamblin, who advised me against sitting on the selection committee. So while I'm listed on this backup material, I wanted to be very clear that I did not sit through one meeting with one vendor on any of the matters ahead. So the information that we have in the backup documents is my first time looking at any of these vendors. So I'm not really quite sure why I'm even still listed as an advisory member, because I had no actions with the advisory committee.
May I address? So I'd like to address my position on the thing. After some of our last instances with selection committees, and board members have been on selection committees in the past, particularly around architects and things like that, so it's not unheard of for us to be on the committee. And I had expressed a lot of interest in the process that we used, because there was such a kerfluffle around the last time. So I asked if I could be on this, as I know this is one of the major committees, a major contracts. And just to be clear, what I did is I sat in the back of the room and listened to all of the presentations by the members of the different companies presented, and that is all that I did. I did not, I just wanted to make sure the process was done fairly and completely. And after the original presentations by the companies, I have had no contact with the committees and have given no insight or information or anything like that to any of the committees. So all I did was listen to the presentations and verify that the process we were going through was a very good process and sound and complete. And so like you said, I've exerted zero influence on any of the scoring or any of the other parts of the process. I participated in none of the reference calls or anything like that, and specifically asked not to, because I did not want to be contaminated with any other information. So the only thing I did was listen to the original presentations by all six of the companies and then bowed out of the process. So that's how that came about.
And board counsel would like to offer some clarification.
Yeah, Ms. Ware Jackson, I'll just offer some clarif, just to give you a little more information. I was consulted on this. My initial, I guess, recommendation was, wasn't comfortable with it. However, there's nothing in the law that prohibits a board member from sitting on a committee as a non-voting member. I think my push was that if a board member sits on the committee, they not have a vote, because it's my belief the board should have one-man, one-vote approach, meaning each board member gets one vote, period. And so that was my input. Mr. Howard and I did speak about that. There's also a historical precedence where we have had this happen before. We've had a number of big projects where board members have acted as sit-ins on committees around RFPs and RFQs, apparently going back some ways. I wasn't aware of that until I looked into it. So I just wanted you to be aware. But there's no legal prohibition. In fact, the state law doesn't give us a lot of form or fashion around how RFPs should be conducted. So it's really up to what the district comes up to in terms of protocols, practices, et cetera.
Yeah, well, you know, I just have to keep saying over and over, you know, if, you know, we use a process sometimes and sometimes we don't. You know, I really do like consistency, because, you know, we talk about transparency, and that's part of consistency. You know, if we consistently do the same thing, the same way, then, you know, we expect certain things. But, you know, so when I saw this, you know, I thought it was a bit odd, because I know, you know, in the past, this is, this kind of conversation has come up, and it's always been a denial, you know, to do something like that. And I do remember the board president sitting on an architectural committee, selection committee. But we didn't really know about that until after the fact. So in the same here, and I'm saying the backup, but I don't know if any board members were, you know, even privy to this information before the backup came out. So I just keep asking for consistency. And if it needs to be in policy, then, you know, put it in policy. We can do that. But practice and policy needs to just go hand in hand. And that's about it. I, you know, I think, I think all of these applicants have very good backgrounds, and the applications were good. I'm surprised at how close they all ran. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can get a really good contract out of this and really have some success moving forward. Thank you.
Board Member Goday, did you still want to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just recognize that we do not have a motion on the floor yet. And so I would like to make a motion to accept a recommendation of the scoring committee and the superintendent.
So I have Goday and President Tatman. All right. And that's it on your comments? All right. Board Member Lanis.
Thank you again, Madam Vice President. I just want to lift up two things, one of which I want to lift up is the fact that one of the companies that we're talking about selecting, it brings question that the very company we're talking about getting rid of or moving away from, one of the companies that we're talking about selecting wants to take workers that come in from this company that we've been getting the most complaints about. That should lift up a serious concern when our community talks about this, our teachers talk about this, our students complain about it, the parents complain about it, and the board members have complained about it. To me, I think that's counterproductive and it's counterintuitive, and it's going to put us in the same place that we're in right now if we go down that line. Two, I think that it is important that we remember that when we gave our stipends to teachers and our support workers, the custodial staff that have been on the ground doing this work did not get one dime, not one dime. Mind you, they're operating off of $9 an hour. I don't know if that's resonating with some people, but that's not very much money to take care of yourself and take care of your family. And I think for the people that have been committed to our district for years, this is a way that we can rectify that. We just had a tough vote earlier tonight talking about minorities inside of our community, and we're going to have another one tonight on this particular issue, because we need to support the people who support us. Think about the message we sent into our community to say that, "You guys do an amazing job, but we're going to give you the shortest end of the stick again," when we have an opportunity to give you 65% minority participation. That's not happening anywhere in this district. It's not happening anywhere inside of this city. This is the way that you fix it. I say that in saying I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we offer and select ABM Industries as these facility management services company. Please, let's make the right vote tonight.
Is there a second on the substitute? All right. Ms. Board Member Bernard, you had, this was for the substitute or for the main?
I'm going to speak on the item. I'm going to speak, is, am I on cue?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to speak on the item. Does anybody have an appetite for sending this without recommendation to the full board meeting so that it can stand alone? Because I have a feeling it's going to come up again anyway. Does anyone have an appetite for that? Okay, well, somebody needs to change their motion, because there's two motions on the floor.
Madam Vice President, I would draw my substitute motion.
Okay.
And Madam Vice President, I will change my motion with my second agrees to refer to the regular board meeting without recommendation.
All righty. Seeing all the board comment or request to speak, any public comment on the recommendation, on the motion to defer without recommendation? Yes, sir?
First, at least the majority of the board has made it clear earlier this evening that transparency and accountability to the public don't matter. But I'm used to wasting my time in the pursuit of hoping that eventually people do the right thing. So I'm going to take up another minute or two of your time. If one of the board members saw all six presentations, I hope they were recorded and that the rest of you could see them and that the public could see them. Furthermore, I sent what I thought was a perfectly reasonable email earlier today asking that, among other things, the RFQ text be uploaded to board docs and that the six individual proposals be uploaded to board docs. When I left my desk, I hadn't gotten a reply to that yet. My understanding is they're not on board docs. Neither is the presentation from a few moments ago on board docs.
It kept germane to this item.
How could the lack of backup be any more germane?
You're speaking in particular to the facility management?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Continue.
It's outrageous that you would be considering this, working on behalf of the public without the public being able to easily, without having to file yet another public record request, because I'm pretty sure Mr. Shamblin is tired of getting record requests from me. And it would be a whole lot easier if records were just routinely made available instead of my having to fight to get them out. So I would respectfully ask that, before this comes to the regular board meeting, that the backup on board docs be expanded beyond two sides of one page. But more importantly, you were apparently accepting the status quo, and Mr. Goday told me several weeks ago that he wanted to keep nine members to avoid the status quo, which was puzzling. But it seems as though you should be considering the possibility that public work paid for with public monies should be done with public employees. And when this was brought up, and you discussed authorizing the RFQ, I thought that one or more of you had suggested that some consideration be made to a possibility of returning back to having public work done in public facilities, paid for with public money, done by public employees. I know that works against the move by this board to privatize everything they possibly can until there's no school system left, but I'm hoping that a few of you would fight back against the effort to give the business community all you possibly can and leave the crumbs for the kids. Thank you.
Seeing no other public.
Hello, I'm here. Don't get away daddy.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Finney, for speaking first. I would like to say that I love our motto of every student, every day. But when we talk about every student, every day, we should also talk about all of the faculty and staff members that have to work with every student every day. So Northeast Elementary and High is probably some of the cleanest facilities I've ever seen in our school system. But it's because the staff members that clean up the schools are heavily invested in those schools. They're members of the community. I know that Aramark has been the contractor for cleaning for our school system. However, they have recently provided, been subcontracting to other entities, and the other entities are not receiving nowhere near the funding that, oh yeah, cut my mic. Okay, they have not been receiving nowhere near the funding that Aramark actually receives. How is that possible? That's hurting the individuals that are working for us, and those individuals actually need to live. You would be amazed at how many of those individuals actually have children that actually attend our school system. They're a part of the every student, every day. However, those students are not getting everything that they need every day to be able to come to the school system to learn, because their parents can't afford it. So I'm asking that we actually provide contracts to the ones that are being subcontracted to do the jobs that Aramark cannot do. to do the jobs that Aramark cannot do, such as cleaning. Aramark don't provide food, but they do when it comes to like board retreats and other things of that nature. So why don't we just eliminate that and allow the cafeteria workers to actually be the ones to do that? This is stuff that makes sense, that actually gives back to the people that are heavily bringing their children into our district every single day. Because it is about every student, every day. And it's hard for every student, every day, to come into a building and their parents is cleaning it up but not receiving equal pay. So I think about that, and I want each and every last one of you to think about that because when the parents are not happy, the children suffer. And who have to deal with those children suffering is the staff that work with them every single day. Thank you. Thank you. And seeing no other public, okay.
Might as well say something here. I think to Board Member Lannis's point, we definitely need to be looking at equity, right? You know, here's why the vote that just happened matters, right? Representation matters when we're making decisions such as this, right? And so when only one board member gets up here and starts talking about equity and looking at percentages in minority participation in contracts, that's problematic, right? And so again, just reflecting on the vote that just happened, again, you know, when we have one board member that sits in a, you know, a meeting or a process that it seemingly none of the other board members had access to, there seems to even be some disagreement from, as I'm watching this, about whether or not it's 65% or something like that, and you seem to be the only board member that actually has an understanding. I don't understand why that would be that way, again, in a transparent process. So again, it doesn't seem like we're going to vote on this tonight. Hopefully, that will not happen. So I won't make any, I'll reserve my judgment on it if you guys are reserving your judgment on it here tonight as well. But I definitely think we need to take a step back, look at all the information to Dr. Finney's point, make sure that the public has access to those documents as well so that we can review, so that we can, when we stand in front of you, can actually make an informed decision, but also give an informed perspective from that of a public. So again, I think we certainly need to figure out exactly what those percentages are in terms of minority participation. I've sat on those, in those processes before. I've actually been on those committees where I've scored, had to score those. And in the current state that we're in, at least here in Baton Rouge, that has always been a very, very, very strong consideration, and that should be the case here amongst this board as well. And so the higher the minority participation, I think, the better the contract.
Thank you. And seeing no other request, excuse me, public comment. Back to the board. Board member Goday.
Yes, just a couple of things. One of the things is, you know, I spent a lot of my own personal time and effort doing the homework on this project, and I just feel now I'm getting beat up by the fact that I did all the homework and attended the meetings and looked through all the contracts and did everything. And so I don't know if I'm going to do that again. And so I spent a lot of time on this, making sure the process was good, and I'm being vilified for it. The second thing is, I fully respect my colleague here talking about 65% minority participation. I have the page out of the proposal, of the HES proposal, that details their 50% target by companies by area. There was nothing that I remember in the proposal from ABM that talked about 65%. There's no written thing of this about 65%. The minority participation was a key item in the thing, and everyone agreed to reach the 50%. So if there's documentation that is in writing that says they're going to reach 65%, I am perfectly willing to consider that. But I don't have that information, and that information was not in any of the details or anything that was in the proposals that were given, even though minority participation of 50% was a number. So I'm very happy to get that. And the two weeks we're going to delay this gives time for that information to come out. So I'm glad we're doing it. I'm not trying to pull anything at all on this. I want to get to a good contract. I want to get to a good contract with good minority participation. I'm going by what I have in writing in front of me. And if I get other information in writing in front of me, I will go with that. But right now, this is what I have. And so that's why I made the proposal I did, but I'm perfectly happy to wait two weeks to let more information come out if that's the, what we need to do. Thank you.
Board member Lannis.
Thank you again, Madam Vice President. I'll just say one, I don't think anybody in the public on this particular item is vilifying anyone. They didn't say any names. All they said was it was a, it was a constant back and forth between minority participation. And as I recall from my colleague, he said that after he left that meeting, there was no conversation that happened between the companies. So if there was a question that had to happen around minority participation, I would suggest, I'm not suggest, but I would guess that you wouldn't know about that. And that's the reason why it is important that over the next two weeks, we had this dialogue with both of the companies that we're talking about in hand. And then we're talking about paperwork and what the numbers say. I hate to beat a dead horse, but we just went through this earlier tonight where the numbers showed that we should have voted a different way, but we didn't do it. So let's not do that. What I will say is, I am open to the conversation. Let's meet, let's talk in dialogue about what is correct, what are the minority participation numbers, and we'll come to an agreement and consensus. But anything outside of that, I don't want to get into an argument, I don't want to get into a disagreement, but I certainly don't want anybody thinking that the public had said something when they simply have not. Everybody has an open concern about this process right now because we've been dealing with a company since 2000, if I'm not mistaken, 2004. And when you add up the amount of money they've made over the years, it's literally in hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, when you ask yourself how much money was poured back into the same community that they're serving, you can't show me that. And I can guarantee you, the percentages are going to be lopsided. That's the issue. And if you don't think that's the issue, that's the issue. That, because that's the issue for me. The people who have been doing the work, they deserve more. Point blank, period. There's no other way to cookie cut that, there's no other way to explain that. And that's just as simple as that. And I even add this, when I was in high school, I never told anybody this, when I was in high school, actually, one of my jobs was to be a janitor. I was a custodial worker at Twin Oaks at one of EBR schools. So I understand the work. And that's when I was making $7.25 an hour. So when I tell you I understand what it feels like not to get the shortest end of the stick, not to be able to make the most amount of money that you can just to take care of yourself and take care of your family, if you don't see it in the eyes of those people every day, if you don't see it when you walk down those halls and you go inside of our schools, if you don't see it when you come inside a central office and you see the floors that are being cleaned, the trash cans that are being emptied, I don't know how else to say that. I don't know how else to explain it. But I'll end with this, over the course of the next two weeks, let's evaluate everybody, keep the process open to the entire public to ensure that we are getting true transparency so we don't have to have these kind of conversations again. Thank you.
Board member Howard.
Oh, my colleague actually took what I was going to say related to the numbers. We've had numbers on this board for four years, numbers that told us that we needed to do things a lot differently. We've had proof, we've had facts, and we continue to act the way that we continue to act. And so I hear you, Brother Gino, about the idea of questioning minority participation. We've been talking about that for four years. This board has made the conscious or unconscious decision to do whatever the hell they please to do. And so as a board member who is frustrated and hears the concern of the people, it's like, why do we continue to beat the dead horse? If minority participation is important to us, that should be a priority that we put through policy about what does minority participation look like in every contract that we sign. But we get up here and we get on this dais and we just continue to gaslight us. I'm tired of being gaslighted. We talk about the same things over and over again, and yet the decisions do not reflect what everybody say. We signed an equity resolution as a board, unanimous passage. This is what we're going to prioritize when we think about equity and minorities and all this. And yet, we have a vote, a vote two hours ago, we go against it, we don't even talk about minority participation in this thing, and then when somebody says it, it becomes a question. So it's like, stop gaslighting me, bro. We've been talking about equity and what it means for an 80% African-American district, and yet the majority of the board, who controls the power, who made it clear that they don't want to release the power tonight, continues to gaslight us. Just stop gaslighting us. Do what you're going to do because you've been doing it for four years, and just let's move on.
Thank you, Board Member Howard. Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, ma'am. Look, I just want to reassure Mr. Goday that, you know, no, we're, I'm definitely not dogging you for wanting to participate in the process and asking for it. My point is that you asked for it. I don't know who you asked, but you got it. And there are some board members who may ask for something and don't get what they're asking for and get every excuse under the sun as to why they can't do it and use policy to justify a denial. And the information that you received in a very timely manner, while everybody else is running from meeting to meeting and all tied up in redistricting and dual enrollment and every other thing on the planet, you know, if, if there was some kind of way that the information that was received by one board member could be shared to the benefit of other board members, that, I believe, would be a lot more fair than for board members to just find out much later on that, oh, well, there were some other board members that were invited or were able to have information prior to any of the others. And all, I'm just saying, there's so many times where there's double standards around here, and I've said it, I've said it to another colleague, I wish there were a bell in here that would ring every time there was a double standard. I'll tell you, we'd have so much music in here all the time. And it is, it is very frustrating because we keep saying the same thing over and over again about transparency, and then we find out, or it, or it looks like some things are in the dark. And it's frustrating, you know? And, you know, this, this work is, is good work, and I think that we just need to walk the talk.
And I just simply wanted to put on the record that I would like to receive the backup materials that my constituent was requesting while I was taking notes. Because I, you know, I too don't have the information. And if it could just be submitted on the backup materials, and that's not saying, you know, just asking for the information, not trying to say anything about any particular board member. And then Board Member Bernard.
I just want to thank both of you for your time and your participation in this process. I really do appreciate it. I appreciate the phone calls that I received today to discuss these matters, and I do agree with what everyone here has said tonight. I think that emotions are running high right now, and I think that some of us might be tired. I know that I worked so late last night that I only got six hours of sleep. So if we could just take this up at a time when things are a little less stressful, I think it would be best, honestly. And I really, really appreciate everybody's opinions and your time and participation on the committees. I think it's very valuable. It gives me valuable insight when I hear from Mr. Goday and from Mr. Lannis. And I appreciate your call today. Thank you.
Board member Dyson.
I'll be quick. I just am a little bit concerned that in the RFP and all, I'd never saw 65%. And so I'm just wondering where this 65% is even coming from because it's, I don't believe it was a requirement of these companies to all say that, that amount. I just, I've never seen the 65% being a criteria, and I think that it's not the time to go around what our RFP requested and request something different now. So I'm just concerned about that change. I don't think we can change what the RFP has asked these providers, potential providers to do. So, thank you.
Board member Howard.
I really don't understand why we even have this conversation. We're going to have it in two weeks. And if the minority participation is a part of the process, so it is already in the documents, you're not changing anything. Just, it's, the 65% is a number that they said that they were going to participate. So whatever their minority participation is already required that they presented. So there's just some clarity that needs to happen around it. But it doesn't matter because if we had 65% right now, that wasn't going to change your vote. So stop gaslighting. Just vote how you going to vote. We'll talk about it in two weeks and take up a vote. You're gaslighting, and it's not cool. You've gaslighted the community for the last four hours and you're still doing it. It's not cool. Just vote.
Board member Lannis.
I'll just add this last tidbit. If, if one of the requirements is that you have to at least be at 50% minority participation to even get the score, how is it that this company is one point less than the, than the company that was recommended? It does not make any sense at all to go back and forth about something that we already know. That's all I'm saying. Doesn't make any sense. In the next two weeks, let's meet with both the companies, or meet with all of them and get every minority participation level and then make the vote. But to say that it wasn't presented, they wouldn't even made it through the process had they not presented a minority participation level, even if it is on paper or whether they said it or not. And I'm willing to bet again that nobody reached out to this company after the presentation. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other board request to speak. Public comment? Or did we do that already? Yes, we did. Thank you. All right. It kind of went on for a little while. I had to, I appreciate you helping me remember where we at. All right, so Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Want to clarify for Mr. Goday to make sure we have the motion right. You're sending it to the regular meeting without recommendation.
Please vote.
All right, moving forward with items. The two, demolition of Jefferson Terrace Elementary School. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to advertise, accept the low bids meeting specifications, and make the award of contract for demolition of Jefferson Terrace Elementary School as specified in the, in the, a plan to improve facilities, technology, discipline, and compensation in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, also known as the tax plan, as revised through February 22, 2018, or reject any and all bids for just cause in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid Law. Can I get a motion? Board member Goday and Board member Baloo. Seeing no requests, seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment?
Good evening. As is your custom, you're ready to throw away a, what, 60,000 square foot building with essentially no backup? If you get a scratch in your car, do you take it to the junkyard? No, you fix the scratch and you, you know, even if the car is old and it's time to get a pretty new one, like the pretty new school down the street in Jefferson Terrace, you find a good use for that used car. So number one, you've been talking about doing a master plan, but you're going to hurry up and make sure this building gets destroyed before you get around to doing the master plan? Is there even any clarity as to whether this is the worst school building or the one that absolutely couldn't be used for? or the one that absolutely couldn't be used for, what was it, Mr. Tabman, that your constituent suggested to you today? A community center, maybe a preschool? In, in the real world, they don't throw away buildings when they're only 60 years old. That's still a pretty new building. Do you need to gut it? Do a bunch of asbestos remediation? Probably, but it probably still has life, especially when you haven't figured out how to educate preschoolers yet. Although this administration's model for educating preschoolers is to take one-time money and highly subsidize strip mall storefront privately owned daycares. At some point, this administration will be gone, and there might be a perfect use for that building, and the building will be gone. And just for what happens when you tear stuff down without a plan. I live in a neighborhood that floods frequently. And so somebody in Washington had the brilliant idea of, let's subsidize the demolition of these buildings. So they use public money, buy the houses, bring in the bulldozers. And then there's public land that can't be used for anything. So until and unless there is a plan for what comes next at the old Jefferson Terrace Elementary, you would be fiscally, morally, ethically irresponsible and reckless to go forward at all with the inertia that will then have no end of tearing the thing down. It's probably not the best idea, and it certainly shouldn't be your priority. And I'm waiting for you to just send it on to the, to the regular meeting, and that resource will be gone for that community. And I'm sick of you guys just voting the way you're going to vote without any regard to what the public has to say. So I'm ready to be pleasantly surprised, but you didn't pleasantly surprise me earlier this evening. Thank you.
Seeing no...
Good evening. So we're here to talk about the demolition of Jefferson Terrace Elementary, and I can think of other things that we can do with the money. Let's try building an emergency, urgent care emergency room close to Northeast Elementary and High School. Our students at Northeast Elementary and High School cannot get access to the emergency medical services that they need in a timely fashion. On November 12, 2021, it took over two hours for EMS to arrive at my son's school to transport him to the emergency room. And I made sure I provided all of the board members with that document because it's important. We have children that have to live in order for them to be educated. And we could have cost my child his life because we could not get him to receive emergency medical services just for stabilization in a timely fashion. So when we talk about demolition of a building that is, that should not be our priority, that's a problem because that's spending money for something that we could use that can actually help the other children. Why don't we take this old Jefferson Terrace Elementary and renovate it and provide emergency medical services for the children that live close to that area? Or the residents that live in that area? I think that would be suffice. And if you want to look at getting more students to come back into our school system, then let's make sure that we provide all of the related services in close proximity to the actual building that will be educating them. That's how we get people to come back. That's called a sustainable community school model. And that is what that's about. So if we want to make every student every day have education and all the necessary resources to be educated, then we have to think outside of the box. And right now, utilizing money to demo a building is not a great priority. But we can use that money towards redoing South Downs Pre-K kindergarten because that's a dilapidated building with nothing but children with disabilities. We can use that money to provide other things, such as the speech therapists and E S Y with livable salaries that we promised them at previous board meetings for this summer. I can go on and on, but definitely, definitely not use it to tear down another building when we can actually use that building for something greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment. Back to the board. I put myself in queue just to lift up a friendly reminder that this agenda item actually is the fulfillment of what is in the tax plan that the board voted on and taxpayers ratified via their vote on the ballot. And so we are simply following what we were told to do by voters. Board Member Howard.
Thank you. Vice President Collins, I just used this as an opportunity to lift up. I've said this to other superintendents, Dr. Narcisse, and I just want to put this on the record to you. A lot of times that we've seen where we've like closed buildings or consolidated buildings, there seems to be a trend that we will be, we'll close a building in certain areas and just leave the building there. And then other areas, we will close schools or close buildings or consolidate and immediately tear them down. I can think, for example, like there's a couple of schools in my district that have just been idle. And they were idle for quite some time, Quest Work Middle to be exact, before it was repurposed, set in a very prominent neighborhood for a very long time in North Baton Rouge with no, no plan. So I'll just encourage you, as you think about strategic plans going forward, that as we think about what consolidation, closing of school buildings looks like, that we also think about the purpose or the repurpose of those sites. Because it, it sends a message to the community that we're okay with keeping old dilapidated buildings in certain areas and not in other areas. So I don't know, that's no offense to your work or what you're doing, but I've said it to previous superintendents, and I just want to put that on the record for you. Thank you.
Board Member Wade Jackson.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to remind the superintendent that for a very long time, board members were asking for a comprehensive plan, which it would include plans for buildings, plans for education, the, the whole big picture. And I know that we've got little pieces here and there, and, you know, we've got different kinds of schools in the pipeline. And, but all of those things kind of run together. So I'm, I'm hoping that we will hear very soon when we will be looking at a, a, a more consolidated plan or, or something that is more comprehensive of, of everything that we have in the district. So we know what we're going to do with certain buildings and, you know, like we're talking about, you know, even lots, you know, all, all of the properties so that, you know, we, we have a plan and it's all tied to academics and programming and the whole nine yards, so to speak, in education.
Okay. You wanted to comment?
Yeah, just wanted to let, just to remind the board. We've done the facilities review plan, and then we went out to get feedback from a set of stakeholders. The next step of what you're describing, Board Member Jackson, is the facilities master plan. Our next work now is to go out, we are putting out an RFQ out for a vendor to be able to help us to have a process on the entire master plan for the entire school district, which is part of the process on what you've described.
Board Member Lannis.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to lift up the sentiments of several of my board colleagues. In my district alone, I have two abandoned school buildings, one of which is Banks, the other one is Ganox Middle School. And after the consolidation of White Hills and Brownsville Elementary, White Hills building will also be vacant. So again, when I say I understand the sentiment, and there's been times where we've said we're going to tear down buildings. This is predates you, by the way, Mr. Superintendent, so I'm just stating this for the record. But there's have been times where we said that we're going to tear down buildings, and those buildings still stand to this day. And if, I just think if we're going to make a move to, to remove buildings, one, let's follow through with it. But two, let's not have those, those, those lands sitting vacant. Let's have a plan in place before we do the tear down. That way, we don't have to go back and wait months or possible, or possibly years before we come up with a finite plan to put something there to replace it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comments, request to speak from the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C3. Consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, Egan Healthcare Corporation doing business as Egan Ashner, HCBS, River Parish's in the amount of $11,000 to provide LPN nursing services to EBR students as directed by the student's IEP. And B, Pediatric Services of America doing business as Aviana Healthcare in the amount of $29,000 to provide additional LPN ser, nursing services. Can I get a motion? Board Member Bernard, and seconded by Board Member Howard. Seeing no request to speak from the board. Any public comment?
How you doing? And I'm, I'm going to speak on the next one too because I think if I'm not mistaken, the next one is about nursing services also. Okay, so what you're doing by actually trying to approve this is actually making us legally liable. And when I say we, I'm talking about the school system. Because we only have one nurse that is directly hired by our school system. So now are you making that one nurse the director of nursing over all these home health agencies that already have director of nursing? I'm just asking because the minds really want to know. And I'm asking that because if that's what you're proposing, then again, we are putting ourselves in a nice, nice area to be legally liable and be sued. Because I know litigation is after the next one. We don't want to do that. So here's my advice. So, and, and this, you're going to love this one, Dr. Narcisse. We want a nurse at every school, says, at every school, right? To get a nurse at every school, let's do the sustainable community school model and do a collaboration with Ashner. They have a pediatrics, really great. Our Lady of Lake, Baton Rouge General. Those are our hospital systems here. We already have contracts with them. All you have to do is increase the funding and actually talk with the Bureau of Family Children Services to actually be able to get them more funding. And we do a nice collaboration and have real true clinics set up in every single school. Bromwell Elementary actually have, I think that's in your district, Mr. Blue. It actually have a very nice area for medical services, and it's not being utilized. It's not being utilized because right now what our school system have is these contracts that actually give us one nurse per five or six schools. So that mean when they actually have a extreme, a, a real medical emergency, the nurse may not actually be there. So let's make it to where the actual medical services can be there. And I know that Ashner, Baton Rouge General, and Our Lady of the Lake would gladly, gladly jump on board. And the Bureau of Family and Child Services, just tell them that Ms. Corle sent you. They gonna open the door with wonderful arms, and they gonna greet you, and they gonna hug you, and they gonna love you. Because they are all about the, the children. And this is how we serve every student every day, by making sure we have actual medical health at the school. That's a great related service, courtesy of a sustainable community school model. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment. Back to the board, seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Just letting the board know, we're down to six members. If we fall below five, we won't be able to continue the meeting. So we just want to keep everybody kind of focused.
And, and in line with being focused, let's move on with item C4. And I'm going to say it real quickly. It's kind of long, but we gonna work with it. Professional Services Contracts: Exceptional Student Services. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contracts between EBR School Board and the following. A, Pediatric Services of America doing business as Aviana Healthcare in the amount of $552,000. Two, provide LPN nursing services as directed by the student's individual IEP plan, individual education plan, excuse me. Strategic Alignment Student Achievement Funding Source IDA Part B. B, Chase Healthcare in the amount of $87,000 to provide LPN nursing services as directed by the student's individual education plan. C, Turner LLC in the amount of $621,000 to provide LPN nursing services as directed by the student's individual education plan. D, Audio Optical System of Austin Incorporated in the amount of $74,892 to provide a comprehensive text-to-speech integrated literacy solution that will benefit EBR students that have difficulty independently assessing their curriculum materials. E, Adaptive Solutions and Sherry Hollingsworth in the amount of $20,000 to provide assistive technology assistance services to EBR students that display severe communication deficits. F, Dr. Cassandra L. Williams, LPBCBADNCSP. Some good credentials. Sundry Behavioral Services in the amount of $60,000 to provide applied behavior analysis services to EBR students that display severe autistic behavioral issues as well as training for E S S staff and teachers. And G, Deaf Resources Center of Greater Baton Rouge in LLC in the amount of $80,000 to provide sign language interpreter services to students with disabilities, hearing impairment. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lannis, and a second by Board Member Howard. Seeing no request to speak from the board, waiting, awaiting public comment.
Thank you. Now see, y'all was supposed to vote no to number three. So you could vote yes to number four. I'm actually in favor of number four. The reason why is because number four, one, you have a clinical psychologist. That clinical psychologist is doing great work. She does great functional behavior assessments. She does some wonderful behavior intervention plans. That's what a lot of our children need. I think that our district just needs to publicize it a little more that we actually have a clinical psychologist on board because we not, she actually deserved more than $60,000. And that's the first time y'all gonna ever really hear me say something about giving somebody more money. So don't bank on that no more. In addition to that, we have children that have in their IEPs that actually need a one-to-one nurse, but they don't have a backup. So we actually really and truly do need to make sure that we keep that contract so that those agencies can provide a backup nurse for those children that actually have a one-to-one nurse. That's important because that's a related service that could actually... That's important, because that's a related service that could actually put our school system into litigation, because they're not receiving that related service as they're supposed to in federal, according with the federal law. I'm paying attention to the time, I ain't gonna cheat y'all. In addition to that, I love, so love, that y'all are actually thinking about our children for once, and that y'all talked about having our sign language interpreters. Do y'all know how many people around this country are happy to see that we actually have American Sign Language interpreters, which is in line with American Disabilities Act? You know, the President, President Biden, all of his meetings have an American Sign Language interpreter. And for once, we're doing what is right. And I am so happy that we have them. Now what we need to do is get American Sign Language teachers. That was the next thing that should have been added into this. Because we have the interpreters, but we don't have teachers that can actually help our kids that use American Sign Language to actually be able to successfully build on it. Right now, my child is only able to use two-worded phrases, because we don't have the teachers to actually teach him to use American Sign Language and be able to say full sentences. So we're having to make him rely on his communication device more than he should, which is not allowing him to actually have all communication modalities according to his communication plan that is attached to his IEP. So I'm telling y'all that for once, I'm in agreement with something I just only want you to add, that we actually get American Sign Language teachers, and that we actually pay our individuals in our school system that work with our children with disabilities a little more. Because I know that it could be challenging. Do you know how much they have to run after my child? He's a real runner. He'll track us though if we had a track team. But because we don't, we'll never know. But he runs, and they have to run after him, whether they feel good or not. So I think that it take real special people to work with children, and it takes even more special people to work with children with disabilities. And I think that they all deserve a raise, because they work hard every single day to make sure that my child make it back home to me safely. And I know, I know that I want him to come back home safely to me. So I really and truly thank y'all, and you'll see me again for number five litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment. Back to the board, seeing no requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C5, litigation. Recommended Action: Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel for East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the matter of: A. Shawinda Spears versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board at All, Docket Number 699344, Section 23 in the 19th JDC of East Baton Rouge Parish. And B. Elizabeth Flores versus Berkeley Insurance Company at All, Docket Number 691862, Section 25 in the 19th JDC of East Baton Rouge Parish. Can I get a motion? Board Member Blue and Board Member Lanis. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Now where would we be without me coming to speak on litigation? Yeah, I know that is my favorite subject, because we have it entirely too much. And due to the vote that we had in the special meeting, I'm quite sure we'll be seeing Supreme Court Justice Ms. Katanji a lot sooner than we anticipated. Because that Supreme Court is now full and ready for action. And I'm telling you, the litigation that can happen because of the maps definitely will bring some litigation. Now, what we should do, when it come to litigation like this, pay them. Pay them. We made a mistake. Pay them. And y'all know I'm gonna tell y'all to pay them, because we just not following the laws. Do we even know about some of the laws? I mean, Senator Boi, I mean, Bodie, Senator Bodie White is about to give us more students and give us more money, and we just dishing it out on litigation. We need to look at that. How much money are we spending on litigation? We would know that if I could actually get that information from public records request, along with those fiscal notes that I've been asking for and the budget. But again, if I don't get that, that opens up the door to more litigation. I'm just telling us that it's mistakes that we making that we should not make. And it cost us too much money. And it impacts the children. Because when we're spending out money for litigation, we don't have the money to teach these children. So let's look at these cases. They're in the 19th Judicial District Court, and we should definitely pay them. Let's see if they will be willing to sit down with us, talk to us, and actually make an agreement and pay them. Pay their court costs, pay their attorney fees, leave them alone, pay them, and we could be done. But that is the one thing that we should do. Let's get it right the first time, and we don't have to go in court. So I love y'all, I appreciate y'all. Please, let's not have to have any more litigation, because it's taking up too much money and too much time from us actually being able to focus on every student every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment. Back to the board, seeing no board requests to speak. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C6. Recommended Action: Discussion and Consideration of the Following: Mapitude Expenditure in 2022 Redistricting Process. So how, okay. Is it appropriate under redistricting for the board president to request the superintendent pay for an additional redistricting expense for mapitude, as redistricting is a board function and not a function under the superintendent? How do we handle that? Board Counsel Shamlin in terms of a motion or process outside of a motion?
Yes, ma'am. This is Ms. Ware Jackson's item, so I'll let her kind of lead us on the motion aspect of it. I'll let her kind of let us know what she wants the board action to be, because that'll guide what the motion needs to, how the motion needs to read.
Well, with this, this comes forward, you know, as part of this whole redistricting cloud. And whether, whether this expense was a board function expense, or whether under redistricting, or whether this was an expense that was delegated to the superintendent and his duties. In redistricting, from what I understand, anything that's related to the contract related to redistricting would need to come before the board. And that's where the question is, whether it should have come before the board for approval or sent to the superintendent. So I'm wondering if, what action would be taken, whether it's to send it back to the, I know we did a reimbursement, you know, if it's, if it's not appropriate, that it would have, that it should have gone to the superintendent and should have been an item that should have been brought to the board for, for consideration, then it should be returned to the contractor. So, and I don't know if, if legal counsel is, hasn't, I don't know if there's enough expertise in redistricting to, to really know whether this, this is an expense that's under redistricting, or whether it's a matter for the superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. So there's not, you don't have a motion made, which is okay, if you'd like me to respond to the question. But there's not a motion on the floor, Madam Vice President. I can, Ms. Ware Jackson, speak to this. It's not necessarily a redistricting. It doesn't require expertise in the process of redistricting. It does, it does dictate you understand somewhat the statutory law and our policy, and I'll speak to that. I believe that you and I have spoken about this kind of, I guess, a little bit previously to the meeting. Statute 71.3, which is a state statute, that's Louisiana Revised Statute 71.3 states that school boards may employ qualified firms to take such special senses, employ such other consultants, attorneys, et cetera, as it deems desirable in order to assist such board in such reapportionment. And so that statute's pretty broad. It does not require the specific approval of the boards for every expenditure related to redistricting. It does say that you may employ firms, which we've done in this case. We have a consultant that we approved. I don't have the approval date in front of me, but it's on board docs. We approved the consultant to assist us with the redistricting process, to provide the design of maps, et cetera. During the work with the consultant, a recommendation was brought to me that there was an additional tool that we might be able to use, provided by a separate company. I think the company provides this tool called Mapitude. It's Caliper Corporation that provides that. It's a separate entity from the consultant that we hired. We were able to negotiate the cost of that down to $9,500. Our district policy states that any expenditure, and the superintendent is an employee of the board, but any expenditure that the board undertakes, under $10,000, the superintendent or designated may handle the assignment of that specifically, especially a professional services, for professional services or product. And so this was $9,500. Dr. Narcisse and I met in February, I believe, I have the date, January, and had a specific conversation around redistricting, because we knew this process would take more than just a consultant to undertake. We talked about the use of IT, and they've assisted with website design and other infrastructure on the internet, because we need to basically create an interface for people to come in, utilize, and understand how we could, you know, provide information to them in redistricting. Also, our communications department, we utilized staff and resources there. And so those are all under the purview of the superintendent. But the software was an invoice, and I provided the board, I actually had a memo to give the board, but I held back on it. But I can send that to you guys, that kind of explains this in detail. Invoices come to us all the time, not just about redistricting, but about the number of expenditures needed in the system, one time and routine. We approve those all the time. Dr. Narcisse has, basically, we spoke, and he says, whatever you need to do for undertaking redistricting to support the board, let's do it. That was our conversation. And so I thought it was well within my authority given to me from the superintendent to do that. I also thought the use of the Mapitude software would have been beneficial to the public. I thought we were acting in the best interest of the board to do that. So I wanted to put those facts out there for the board, because I know there've been questions around whether this was appropriate or not. I believe under state law and under policy, it is appropriate, basically in the way that we handled it as a staff and as a board. Of course, as a board member, any board member can request an item be brought back to the board for approval, if that's the request. But at this point, I think you were requesting information, which we provided, and I'll take any additional questions.
The policy that you refer to speaks to reapportionment expenditures?
No, ma'am. It speaks to procurement of professional services. And so that, that covers anything, any professional services, which includes stuff, you know, items like Mapitude. Anything we utilize as a system comes under that procurement service. So we have a number of contracts that come before me for approval every day under $10,000. Those do not come to the board for approval.
Things we use in the system?
Yeah, and also things that the board uses exclusively, such as board docs. That comes up routinely. We don't bring those back to the board for approval. That's an exclusive board function. So, you know, this was done under a policy. We were authorizing the policy to act. I can answer any questions. I'm not sure if that gives you what you need in terms of the information.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not about, it's not about the money. Because, you know, I'm sure some people would say, you know, we, we spend a lot of money, you know, on some things that, that we really need, some things in this case that we might not need. It was just a question of whether it was under, the area of redistricting is a little bit touchy. I know that, you know, the board, we got, we got a contract with, with a vendor to do certain services, and this kind of service is directly related to what the, what the contractor would normally do, you know, create maps. So it's basically a tool that, that the, the vendor would be, would be using normally. And in the presentation, as it was presented in the meeting, it wasn't clear as to whose expense it was. And during the meeting, there were board members, one in particular, I recall, and I went back just to make sure and look at, you know, was referring to it as the, the tool that Mr. Hefner was providing. And said it a few times during the meeting, and no one questioned whether it was a district expense or whether it was Mr. Hefner's expense, especially since we, we overpaid him for, or at least was the highest bid on, on all of the, of all of the, of the contractors. So some of us thought that it was coming out of his pocket. And especially with the reaction from board members and members of the public. And so I, I thought it needed to be clarified, and we needed to, to know whether it was indeed an expenditure that was a redistricting expenditure, which should have been brought back to the board for approval, or whether it was a district-related expenditure that would be under the superintendent. And I don't, I don't know, you know, which, which it really is, and, but I would, I would ask that, so you're saying that it is, so what would, what would you suggest we do? Just ratify the expense?
There's not a need to ratify the expense. It was handled legally, right, under policy. So I would only ask you to ratify something if I thought we'd done it improperly, and we haven't. I'll give you another example of how we've done this. It just occurred to me. We passed a tax plan back in 2018, and that, that involved a number of expenditures we never brought to the board. And, and the levying of a tax is the exclusive, exclusive area of the board, not the superintendent. But we acted with graphic arts, we acted with our consultants, who we paid, who then handled other things for us through reimbursement, did the same thing in that process. So it just occurred to me, I didn't talk to you about that, but our efforts to pass the tax were very similar. Because levying a tax does not belong to the superintendent, it belongs to the board. But we utilized the district resources fully. We hired a consultant through the board, if you recall, but we used graphic arts to do mailings. We did a number of expenditures, invoices came to us that we approved that we didn't bring back to the board. And I'll say this too, Ms. Ware Jackson, just to give you additional information. I appreciate you asking this question, because I think clarification was needed. In this case, the Mapitude software was for the public's use, not for the demographer's use. If hypothetically, it had been more than 10,000, we would have had to bring that to the board. That would have pushed us almost into April before we could actually implement, which would really have made it impractical. It wouldn't have been useful to the public. And so our goal was really to provide the public with a tool to give people access in ways they haven't had it before. And I just wanted to kind of give you that additional information.
Yeah, well, I know there, there are other districts that have done this and, you know, Yeah, well, I know there, there are other districts that have done this and, you know, would, would disagree. And, and other former presidents who've been through redistricting who disagreed as well. So I thought it good to bring it before the board for that question and, and to decide whether this was something that was a legitimate expense for the superintendent or whether it should have been brought to the board. So I would just ask that, you know, since, since it is a voting item, you know, if we would want to vote whether it is an expenditure, that should have been delegated to the superintendent.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to recognize the expenditure as something that should have been delegated to the superintendent?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second? Motion to, yeah.
The motion is to say that it should have gone?
Well, if he's, if he's saying that's what it...
That's what it was. Right?
I don't believe it was, but...
It wasn't delegated to the superintendent? I'm so confused.
Yeah, it is confusing. Let me, let me change the motion then. That it, that it should not have been delegated to the superintendent. It's been a long ride.
It is.
As an expense. Is the motion to ratify that expense? Or are you simply recognizing that it should not have been delegated to the superintendent? I guess I want to know what outcome would you like, Ms. Wade Jackson? What are you trying to accomplish, I guess? What's the board action?
Well, if it were not delegated to the superintendent, what would we do? Send it back?
We'd have to bring it back to the board for ratification.
Okay.
Okay. And so we'd have to bring it back to the board, I guess, as a standalone item at the regular meeting? Would that be your choice?
Yeah, if the board voted that it...
Yes, that's correct. Ms. Lanis, you're the second on that?
Board Member Howard.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to get some points of clarity because I understand my colleagues, I think I understand my colleagues' intent. But I'm also, when, it's, it's a, it's a thin line because when you start to pull, not, I don't want to say that you're policing, Ms. Wade Jackson, so don't mince my words. But like, there is a threshold amount. And if we have historically practiced that items within that threshold amount is handled in this matter, whether it's redistricting, whether it's, whatever the situation is, like, I think that that's a practice that we should continue. And then I don't necessarily understand the recourse for this action because we've already purchased the product, we've already used the product. And so I think it's, I don't know if, if we get the outcome. I think that it's, for the record, to let it be known where Ms. Wade Jackson is coming from as it relates to items that are maybe a little more like redistricting and like items that are like really hot bucket issues. But I think that there is a threshold amount. And I think that this, the action getting MapTitude followed that threshold amount. And so I don't want us to get into the business that the next time we purchase something for $3,000 and we have to continue this. So I would just, I don't understand, I don't know what the recourse would be because we've already purchased it, people have used it. And we, we have to make in on our bargain. So we have to pay for the items that we've used. So I don't necessarily understand if I understand what recourse or action we will get if we bring this back to the board because regardless, we have to pay for it because we've used it. So, you know, I think it's, it's great that my colleague puts her concerns on the record, but I don't know if this motion gets us anywhere because we've already used the product. So I just wanted to lift that up.
Board Member Dyson.
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify that our legal counsel is saying that this does not require ratification, that it was handled because it was under the threshold, as we do any other kinds of expenses like that.
That's correct. And what I'm saying specifically is we comply with policy and law.
Yeah.
And this does not require further action. That's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other board member, Wade Jackson?
Well, my, my main point was to just bring this forward and to, to get some clarification and to get some input from board members because in redistricting, there are certain rules. And, you know, some of them, you know, this whole process has been so strange that, you know, and some districts say that you should do things a certain way and, and, you know, and, and we haven't done them certain ways, you know, that others have suggested or said that, that we should. So I just really wanted to make sure that we were operating under the guidelines of redistricting and that this, this expense was something that, whether it should have been brought to, brought back to the, to the board or not, I mean, some may say it does, it should have been, some maybe not. But it, it didn't meet the threshold. And I know that the, the expenditure normally would have gone beyond what, what we paid for it. So I know we had to do a little special, a little special massaging in there to, to keep it below that, that area. And, and I could see in the meeting that there was confusion. And afterwards, if, if it hadn't been brought up, you know, most people in the public would have thought that, that, that it was an expense that the, the demographer had, had covered within his, within his contract. So I am basically satisfied that the conversation is, is out, is on the table and it's, it's on public record. And along with all the other redistricting nightmares that we've been through in the last few hours. So if there, you know, I don't, I don't know what the recourse is from here, you know, except, you know, if we agree it's, it was okay, then...
So Ms. Wade Jackson, you have a motion. Do you want to withdraw the motion or do you want to take a vote on the motion?
Well, I think we, we can take a vote on the motion and, and be done with it.
You'll have to take comment, Madam Vice President.
Public comment, seeing no other requests to speak from the board, we move to public comment.
If this should happen to pass to the regular board meeting, which I kind of doubt will happen, it would certainly be wonderful if, as backup, you supplied Mr. Hefner's contract and also the contract or purchase agreement or whatever the paperwork was, detailing the arrangement with MapTitude. I'm not going to try to twist your arm into voting yes or no because this is relatively small potatoes compared to other ways money gets spent in unfortunate ways. And I appreciate the effort to get more public involvement and draw in plans. And I wouldn't have guessed until I tried it that MapTitude was as difficult a user interface to get used to as it turned out to be. So I appreciate the sentiment, making that tool available. And I hope it was useful to some folks, even though I didn't find it useful, anyway. If it advances, please provide some backup. You used it? Congratulations.
Okay, so we purchased this product. So can the board, someone on the board make a motion to actually let the community use this product? And we actually create a map? Even though we never voted on one, this gives the board an opportunity to right their wrong?
I'm sorry.
Uh-uh, hold my time.
Yeah, hold on. The public, this is on the school board website.
I know, but, oh, go ahead.
The public can already, already had an opportunity to use it.
Okay, so again, here's my, here's my recommendation. My recommendation is... My recommendation is, because not everybody in the community knows that, just like everybody in the community don't know that the school board meetings is open to the public. I'm just trying to educate the board members on what the public don't really understand. Now, in my mind, I think that we can have a couple of more town halls and actually allow the actual community to use these, use this program and create some maps and bring it back. And this would actually give the board an opportunity to right its wrong. Now, that's just me being nice and friendly. And that would prevent litigation. I always think about the board members each and every time I come up here. And so I just thought that it would be nice and friendly to actually provide that recommendation. And I know that we have everybody here on our board that love each and every child. And I know that Corinth would even be more than happy to actually play with the program and to, to help actually create a nice board that represent all of our constituents. So I just thought that that would be something nice that we should consider. But if we're not paying, having our demographer pay for that, then what exactly did we pay our demographer for? Because right now, it looked like we paid him to make an oopsie and to violate federal law. And that is something that actually allows us to say that he breached a contract and that he should actually have to give us back our money. So I think that we should actually say that we would like that, our school board counsel, Mr. Shamlin, to actually look back over the demographer's contract and actually refund us our money because we did not get the service that we actually asked for. That's my, my thing on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comment.
And seeing no other public comment back to the board, seeing no other board request to speak. Madam Secretary, please call the board.
Now we gotta repeat what the, what the motion was. What do you have?
Yes ma'am, the motion is, the motion to recognize a MapTitude expense as an expense that should not have been delegated to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. Should not have been. The motion fails.
Now moving forward with the announcement of meetings. Public hearing on redistricting to be held on April 21st, 2022. Oh, that's great. I, look.
No.
I just skipped over item D1. Thank you kindly.
Oh, yeah, the presenter has, has left the building.
Okay. So then we need to, because it's not an action item, so it doesn't matter. Okay. All right. See, I knew what I was doing. All right, announcement of meetings. Public hearings on redistricting to be held on April 21st, 2022 at 5:00 PM here at the Central Office Boardroom. Regular meeting is to be held on April 21st, immediately following the public hearing at Central Office Boardroom. Another public hearing on redistricting will be held on May 5th at 5:00 PM at the Central Office Boardroom. Then a special meeting approval, adoption of redistricting plan to be held on May 5th will follow immediately the public hearing at the Central Office Boardroom. And then on May 5th, 2022, we shall have a committee of the whole to be held on May 5th, immediately following the special meeting at the Central Office Boardroom. So a lot of meetings on two different days for clarity. And, German? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have...
I, I have a question.
Yes ma'am, board, board member Wade Jackson.
Oh, around the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I must be looking at the wrong thing. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. What's that, when is the date of that public hearing?
So we have two. One is on the 21st before the regular board meeting. And then the second, public hearing on redistricting.
On the 5th?
On the 5th, before a special meeting. Then there will then be a committee of the whole. So three meetings back to back on May 5th, like we did today, beginning with the public hearing.
And the purpose of the public hearing? Mr. Shamlin?
Yes ma'am. Purpose of the public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide feedback and information to the board on the selected plan, as we did tonight. And then the board can consider that information in any capacity it so chooses.
For both public hearings?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
So input from that public meeting could affect the plan if we so chose?
Well, the law requires that any plan that the board adopts or ratifies be published for 20 days. So if we make a change to the plan, we would have to re-advertise that plan and wait 20 days. So in reality, Ms. Wade Jackson, yes. But in reality, we are coming up on some time limits. And so if we made changes, they'd have to happen very quickly. I think, I believe June 21st is the submission date to the Secretary of State's office. So every time we delay, it pushes us back a little bit. So if we were to re-advertise, we'd have to resubmit, re-advertise, go through the process again for any change.
So we're not legally bound to do anything with the information that comes out of the, the public hearings?
No, the purpose, yeah, the purpose of public hearings is to give the board members insight into what the public would like to see and what their concerns and what their supports are, and then to vote accordingly or make recommendations accordingly.
Well, I think they've made that pretty clear long before we, long before we voted. But we'll at least have these public hearings and hear it again.
Yeah.
And again.
And by law, we are required to have the final public hearing, which is before the ratification date.
Okay, thanks.
And so then for clarity, the April 21st one is put in for good measure?
Well, that was part of the process that you proposed that we adopted. So your proposal included two additional public hearings. We did, we handled the first tonight. The second one was, was a part of your proposal, and the third is required by law, so...
But is the third, oh, because that's before 20 days?
It's got to be conducted after the 20 days.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, got you. And so adjourned.